Welcome to the December 4, 2025 Planning Commission hearing. I will call the hearing to order at 1:03 PM. Ms. Carmen, can we please have roll call?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. I will begin with Chair Wardlow.
Here.
Vice Chair Boss.
Present.
Commissioner Barnwell.
Here.
Commissioner Balki.
Here.
Commissioner DeLucio.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
And Commissioner Wiscombe.
Here.
We have quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's get started with preliminary matters. Requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or ex-agenda items. Ms. Arseniega, do we have any?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. We do not.
Wonderful. Do we have any announcement or appeals?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. We do have one announcement. I'd like to bring up the reappointment of Commissioner Balki and Commissioner Wardlow, so we'll be continuing on in the next calendar year with the same group. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
May I make an announcement, too? I just want to announce that our esteemed Assistant City Attorney, Teva Ostringer, has just been promoted to Chief Assistant City Attorney, otherwise known as Kaka.
Congratulations, Teva.
Well deserved. Well deserved.
Thank you. And now we will go on to Item C, Review, Consideration, and Action on the Following Draft Planning Commission Minutes and Resolutions. So we have three here, and I'd like to break it up because I know some folks weren't at all the hearings. So first, November 6, 2025 Planning Commission Minutes, November 13, 2025 Planning Commission Minutes, and the Planning Commission Resolution Number 01025 for Los Potos Underpass Removal Project. Are there any Planning Commissioners' comments on the minutes or resolutions?
I have a comment. Actually, I read the minutes. I have a comment on page four of the minutes from November 6. That was Los Potos, and it has to do with the -- we put a couple of conditions on there, and those conditions are in the resolution. However, it's numbered incorrectly on the minutes. Number one, it's not on page one, it's on page two. If you had to go to the resolution on page two to find that condition. So that's my change, and otherwise I'll move the minutes if there's no other comments.
All right. Before we go there, are there any public speaker comments on the minutes or resolutions?
I do not have any speaker slips at this time.
Okay, wonderful. Commissioner DeLucio, do you want to move the November 6 first, and then we'll go to the others?
Can I move the resolution also? Because they come together.
That's fine with me.
Okay. I'll move, as amended, the resolution and the minutes as amended.
Great.
I'll second it.
And we have roll call for the November 6 and the Planning Commission Resolution for Los Potos.
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. I'll begin with Commissioner Balki.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLucio.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiscombe.
Yes.
Vice Chair Boss.
Yes.
And Chair Wardlow.
I'm staying.
Motion passes. Thank you.
And then we will now go to November 13, 2025 Planning Commission Minutes. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll move the minutes.
Thank you. Balki seconded. Thank you. Can we please have roll call for the November 13 minutes?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. I'll begin again with Commissioner Balki.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLucio.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiscombe.
Yes.
Vice Chair Boss.
Yes.
And Chair Wardlow.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to public comments pertaining to items not on today's agenda. Do we have any public comment speaker slips?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. At this time, I don't have any speaker slips for general public comment, though if anyone in the audience would like to speak under general, you can approach the podium at this time. But I'm not seeing any movement. And if anyone in the audience would like to speak under a specific item, you can bring -- fill out a speaker slip at the back of the room and bring it up to me. But with that, I will move to virtual participation where we don't have anyone online with us, but I will acknowledge that we received written correspondence from Sherri McNamara and Arnie Cooper, and give it back to you.
Thank you. We will now close general public comment. We'll move on to discussion item three, Single Family Streamlining Project. This project aims to simplify the process for single-unit housing. The commission is asked to consider the proposed amendments and provide feedback to staff. We have Ellen Kokinda, City Planner, and Ted Hamilton-Roll, Acting Design Review Supervisor, with us today to provide a staff presentation. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Wardlow, Commissioners. I also want to acknowledge Brenda Belts, Planning Analyst, is here to answer questions. We also have Supervising Transportation Planner Jessica Grant and Community Development Director Allison Debask on deck. We are here today to present the draft ordinance amendments associated with the Single Family Design Board Streamlining Project for your consideration. And before I begin, I'd like to just clarify a numbering issue in the staff report. On page 13 of your packet, the number 3B should be 3A, and so on. Also, I'd like to request an additional 10 minutes for the presentation from the chair. 25 minutes total should suffice.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. This project implements much-needed changes to the city's design review process for single-family development. We've heard from homeowners that they're frustrated by the complexity of the design review process for home improvement projects and the delays that can result. The city spends an ordered amount of time and resources on those minor projects that usually have little to no impact on the neighborhood but take up space on public hearing agendas. City Council has heard the community's feedback, and in 2022, the Land Development Team Oversight Committee directed staff to make the process simpler and more efficient in response. Along with the amendments specific to single-family development, we are proposing a host of amendments that address the new state laws, housing element updates that reduce constraints on housing development, and clarifying amendments to the zoning ordinance that streamline processes and simplify code language. This is the second time the Planning Commission has seen this project. The first was in March 2024, when staff presented preliminary amendment concepts for discussion. And since then, we've held additional discussions at the Single Family Design Board, done outreach to the Santa Barbara AIA, the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors, some neighborhood representatives, project appellants, and we've also briefed City Council on the code amendment concepts. For today's hearing, we'll provide an overview of the proposed amendments, open public comment, and then take initial questions and comments from the commission. This is a discussion item, and no action is being requested today. However, we do anticipate returning for a recommendation to City Council in early January. As a refresher, this project was initiated back in 2022 as a result of the 2020 Novak Consulting Group report, which the Land Development Team Oversight Committee used to direct staff to make streamlining improvements to the design review process. Starting in 2023, we reviewed three years' worth of SFB project data to look for opportunities to streamline, put out an online survey to folks who'd been through the SFB process, including homeowners, architects, designers, planning consultants, and others. We also held focus groups with current and former SFB members, as well as design and planning professionals who had been applicants before the SFB. In addition, we held working group meetings with American Institute of Architects or AIA volunteers in an SFB subcommittee. And this year, we held a briefing session at City Council on the proposed amendments and met with project appellants. We have three main goals for this project. First, to reduce the number of single-family development projects subject to design review. Second, to streamline the public hearing process for single-family projects. And third, to create more flexibility to address common homeowner interests. This project does not propose to eliminate the SFB or even significantly reduce its purview. Instead, the goal is to make measured, common-sense changes that help staff get to yes on more projects. Key project actions include updating the SFB code and guidelines and incorporating complementary amendments to the zoning ordinance. Goal one is to reduce the number of projects subject to design review. The primary change we're proposing to achieve this goal is to exempt alterations from design review if they don't result in new floor area and either visually match the existing development or result in a new cohesive design. Site improvements would also be exempt if they involve less than 50 cubic yards of grading. And this is a new approach compared to what we discussed with you in March 2024, when we were still proposing a design review trigger for major alterations and attempting to define what a major alteration is. We changed course on that approach after realizing that creating such a definition posed challenges with implementation and objectivity and usability of the code. Here's an example of how we'd apply this new approach and what we mean by exempting alterations from design review, using a project that received SFB approval. The existing mid-century home in the top image needed a new roof, windows, and plaster. There is no change in square footage, only this cosmetic exterior update and remodel. Under current code, the project required consent review due to the number and extent of the changes proposed. However, under the proposed code, the project would not require a public hearing since it only involves exterior alterations and the resulting design is cohesive and consistent with the SFB guidelines. If these amendments are adopted, we anticipate at least a 21% reduction of SFB projects. This is a conservative preliminary estimate of the total number of projects that would be reduced, the bare minimum that we can expect to be eliminated. The actual reduction in projects may be higher. Note that there is little change to the share of projects that's reviewed at full board. That's this red triangle here, 28% under current code, 27% under proposed code. This demonstrates that we are not proposing to change anything that would remove the most significant projects, like new two-story houses, from SFB purview. Goal two is to streamline the public hearing process by consolidating SFB review from two approval hearings into one. The current process involves public hearings for both project design approval and final approval. Project design approval is the main SFB approval, and it's one that counts for state-permit streamlining purposes. Final approval, despite its name that applies otherwise, is not the substantive SFB approval. Instead, it's only the approval of final project details and verification that those project details substantially conform to the project design approval. Currently, final approval is appealable by anyone withstanding, even though its scope is narrow, limited to color and material details and whether the project conforms to project design approval. The proposed process frontloads the review of final details to project design approval and defers review for substantial conformance to the building permit phase performed by staff. If staff find that the building permit plans do not substantially conform to project design approval or are otherwise uncomfortable making a decision, we have the option to refer final approval to the SFB. Final approval decisions made at SFB would only be appealable by the project applicant. To assist staff with making these post-approval decisions, we are introducing a process for determining substantial conformance to approved plans in the SFB guidelines. This is a lot of text on one slide, and we can come back to it, but for now, just know that there are seven substantial conformance criteria that need to be met. Minor variations to plans may be approved if they meet these criteria, and if they do not, then a revised project design approval is required. This makes it much more clear to everyone what to do when a plan set deviates from what SFB approved and was something that SFB project appellants and neighborhood representatives By consolidating the SFB approval process, we're implementing a Novak Report recommendation to reduce the number of appeal points. Shining a light on project design approval is the most important approval, and by eliminating a hearing, we're helping the city comply with the five-hearing limit for housing projects set by the Housing Crisis Act. Also, most jurisdictions only have one approval step and one appeal point for single-family projects, which we think is sufficient. We also propose to change the eligibility requirements to appeal HLC and ABR final approvals. As with final approval decisions made by the SFB, the proposed amendments would make ABR and HLC final approval appealable only by the project applicant. Again, this facilitates the city's compliance with the Housing Crisis Act for housing projects. Along with streamlining the final approval process, staff propose updated findings for SFB project design approval. We've reduced the number of findings from seven to five, shortened the text, and reworded the findings to keep their original intent while also focusing them on SFB's purview of house-size design and aesthetics. This is something the SFB has requested and will help with the clarity of their motions. We also propose cleanups to the hillside finding and grading and vegetation removal findings that focus the SFB's review on project aesthetics and reduce the amount of text for them to read, again helping with clarity of motions. Another streamlining code amendment is to update mailed notice triggers for all design review boards. The biggest changes are two additions. Currently, a 500-square-foot first-story addition requires a mailed notice. We're proposing to increase that threshold to 800 square feet. This aligns with state ADU law that allows ministerial approval of an 800-square-foot ADU. And similarly, with second-story additions, we propose to increase the notice threshold from 150 to 250 square feet. This would allow staff to administratively approve a small-bedroom addition to an existing second story, something that the current code and guidelines do not allow. Lastly, for design review ordinance amendments, is a concept that the SFB, HLC, Planning Commission, and City Council all supported, so I'll keep it brief. Currently, the process to approve or deny a single-family project exceeding the allowable floor area, currently called an FAR modification, is done in three steps. First, a required concept review at design review; second, the formal decision at Planning Commission; and third, back to design review for project design approval and final approval. The proposed process combines these three steps into one, making the design review body the decision-maker. SFB stakeholders indicated that FAR findings have more to do with aesthetics than land use, therefore, design review is the best review authority. In addition to design review ordinance updates, we propose to update the Single Family Design Board guidelines. There are two main sets of guidelines for SFB, the Single Family Residence Design Guidelines, which we aren't proposing to change, and the General Guidelines and Meeting Procedures, which we are proposing to overhaul. This overhaul includes a general reorganization and reformat to enhance readability, simplifying and consolidating the long list of SFB goals, and enhanced process guidance, including the addition of substantial conformance criteria that we already talked about. And to help streamline the process, we also plan to expand the guidelines' criteria for administrative staff-level approvals of minor projects. As a refresher, staff process admin approvals daily for small projects like window and door changes, small additions, re-roofs, and more. And to provide context for how this works, when an applicant submits a design review application, staff reviews it and determines the level of design review based on the scope of work and guidance in the SFB guidelines. We assess whether the project meets the criteria for an admin approval or whether it needs to be bumped up to consent, which is handled by one or two members or the full board of five members. So right now, we are just discussing admin staff-level approvals. The first thing I'd like to highlight is that we're expanding administrative approvals of accessory buildings and additions at the first story from a maximum of 500 square feet to a maximum of 800 square feet. In line with the noticing trigger and state ADU law, this allows approval of up to 800 square feet. Accessory buildings would have to be outside of the front yard to qualify, and additions would have to not significantly alter the front facade. The next thing to highlight is additions to a second or higher story. Currently, the code and guidelines only allow a 150-square-foot second-story addition to be approved administratively. We recognize that second-story massing can present compatibility and privacy issues, so we're not proposing to allow entirely new second stories on an existing one-story building to be approved administratively. Instead, we're proposing to be able to approve a modest increase from up to 250 square feet to an existing second story. And lastly, I want to highlight decks. The new code standards for decks would exempt one deck max 16 by 10 feet per facade, and decks larger than that would require design review. For decks that require design review, first-story decks up to 800 square feet and second-story decks up to 250 square feet would be eligible for administrative approval. Roof decks would remain ineligible for administrative approval as they currently are. And here's an example of the type of addition that would qualify for admin approval under the new code. It's the red-hatched area on the slide. This addition required consent review because it was over the 500-square-foot size limit allowed for administrative approvals under current guidelines. And by allowing admin approval of up to 800 square feet, we're allowing more flexibility for projects that are obviously consistent with the SFB guidelines. They don't alter the front facade, are a cohesive design style, and are located in consideration to neighbors. This would allow more streamlined permits for projects like adding a bedroom addition at the rear of the house. And for comparison, here's an example of an addition that would not be eligible for admin approval with the new standards. Even though the addition shown here is small and the one-story and meets most of the criteria, it does not meet the criteria that prohibits additions being -- or significantly altering the front yard or the front facade. This addition does just that, adding a significant amount of massing and disrupting the symmetry of the fenestration. And it's important to keep in mind that just because we receive an administrative approval request, we do not have to approve it administratively, and we regularly refer admin approval requests to consent or full board if they don't meet all of the criteria. The last single-family streamlining component we're sharing today is zoning amendments that help streamline home improvement projects and address common homeowner interests. Our primary approach to achieve this goal and to reduce the number of automatic design review triggers is to create design standards from existing design guidelines. Applicants can either design to these standards and be exempt from discretionary design review or request an exception reviewed at SFB. This allows the community to maintain aesthetic oversight even with state mandates to reduce design review. One such guideline-turned-standard is that upper-story decks should be 15 feet away from the property line. Currently, that is a design guideline, and that is becoming a code standard. For fences and site walls, the maximum height is per the zoning code, and the code now specifies allowed materials, including wood, black or green painted metal, masonry, or stucco. Disallowed materials include chicken wire, vinyl, unfinished CMU block, and chain link. These materials are based on those listed in the SFB guidelines currently. Exceptions to these new standards can be requested at design review. Initially, we had planned to exempt all minor zoning exceptions from SFB review. However, we recognize that overheight fences, walls, and hedges, as the one shown in this image, can significantly affect the streetscape and shared property lines between neighbors. Therefore, we're keeping the process the same for fences, hedges, and walls, with a public hearing and mailed notice required. We are proposing a new process for the more commonly-approved MZEs, including building height increases in the setback, trash enclosures in the front yard, and newer expanded openings in the setbacks. Those would now be reviewed administratively using code standards. Those would now be reviewed administratively using code standards based on the existing findings for minor zoning exceptions. We're proposing minor changes to height regulations for fences and hedges illustrated in the red text. Notably, for front-yard fences, the maximum height that's allowed is decreasing from eight feet to five feet, but you can still request an M Z E to go up to 12 feet. This may seem more strict at first glance, but this actually allowed us to eliminate the design review trigger for front-yard fences over three-and-a-half feet tall. Instead of having this automatic design review trigger, we're allowing a five-foot-tall fence in the front yard by right as long as it meets objective design and material specs aligning with the current guidelines. As you'll see in this table, we also introduced standards for height for retaining walls. That is not something that's currently in the current code. These next few concepts are aimed at providing homeowners more flexibility in how they develop their property. The main change we're proposing is to remove the requirement that parking spaces for single-family residents, duplexes, and condos have to be covered. This gives property owners building a new house the option to not build a garage, potentially lowering project cost and reducing project size and bulk. Note, we're not proposing to change the number of required parking spaces, only the stipulation that they must be covered. This provides significant relief from regulations. The current zoning code often forces people into a path they don't necessarily want to take just to get an approval. The new regulations provide more common-sense options. This particularly benefits folks with non-conforming one-car garages who want to add another parking space. Currently, if someone with a non-conforming garage wants to get a permit to alter it, they have to make it fully conforming to current code, which can be quite costly and is sometimes infeasible due to site constraints. The proposed code would allow these folks to get a permit to demolish their non-conforming garage and replace it with uncovered parking spaces, saving time and money. These process improvements also allow more options for folks who want to use their garage for something other than parking but don't want to convert it to a full-fledged A D U with a full bathroom and kitchen. Currently, the code allows your garage to be either a garage or an accessory dwelling unit with no flexibility to permit it as a workshop, playroom, storage, or anything in between. By removing the covered parking requirement, the proposed amendments would give people options to keep their garage as-is or convert it to a space that better meets their needs, like storage or a guest room. Along with allowing the flexibility to build or not build a garage, the proposed ordinance would allow the construction of a guest house that can be used only by the occupants of the main residence, their non-paying guests, or domestic employees. This gives people more flexibility to build a space with a bedroom and full bath for their guests to visit without the expense of adding a kitchen. Again, this is something that current zoning does not allow. We also propose easier-to-meet-open-yard requirements. There are many lots in the city between 5,000 and 6,000 square feet, and they often have a hard time meeting the required 1,250 square feet of open yard when planning an addition or an accessory building. To address this, we propose to update the zoning code to reduce the open-yard requirement to 800 square feet for lots 6,000 square feet and smaller. We also propose to change the minimum dimensions from 20 by 20 feet to 20 by 15 feet. This will make it far easier for folks with smaller lots to meet the open-yard requirements while still providing ample open space. Along with ensuring adequate open space, the proposed amendments promote vibrant streetscapes by requiring landscape in the front setback. Currently, we have nothing in the ordinance or guidelines that prevents a front setback from being entirely covered over in asphalt. And to address this, we propose to add a requirement that at least 50% of the area in the front setback be planted, as shown in this sketch. To address privacy concerns voiced by members of the public, we propose to add standards for upper-story windows within 15 feet of an interior lot line. They can either use a minimum sill height of 42 inches or be oriented toward the front or the rear. This prevents large floor-to-ceiling openings looking directly at neighbors. This is another example of an existing guideline turned into a standard. The Single Family Residents' Design Guidelines encourage upper-story openings to be placed on a front facade, like in the image on the slide. Currently, there's not a codified process to issue building permits to address immediate threats to life and property. The proposed amendments add a procedure for emergency permits that allow the Community Development Director to approve a temporary emergency permits. These approvals are subject to conditions and limitations, including that the permanent work be permitted under the regular process after the emergency has been addressed. This helps us be nimble and flexible when things like landslides or fires happen and quick remediation is needed. Occasionally, there are projects that the code requires to go to the Community Development Director or staff hearing officer for a decision, but the project is controversial or complex enough to warrant review by a higher review authority. The proposed code allows the director or the staff hearing officer to refer the project to the next highest review authority without holding a hearing to do so. This eliminates what is effectively a wasted hearing for a referral, allowing the project instead to just go straight to the next highest review authority for a decision. Before I conclude, I want to mention how this project implements one Housing Element policy and three programs. By reducing design review triggers, increasing mailed notice thresholds, and creating objective standards using the existing guidelines, this project implements Policy H 1.4, reducing constraints that impede housing development. It also facilitates special-needs housing under Program H E 3 by streamlining the review process for group homes and employee and farmworker housing and expanding the zones that allow low-barrier navigation centers. Program H E 5 is the through-line of the whole project, streamlining design review. This is the common thread between the NOVAC report recommendations and the Housing Element implementation, reducing design review triggers, and streamlining public hearings. And lastly, Program H E 8 facilitates temporary housing and emergency shelters and allows homeowners to live in an A D U or a mobile home on their property if their primary residence is destroyed or damaged. It also eliminates the requirement for discretionary approvals like performance standard permits and conditional use permits for small and large home daycare facilities and lowers barriers to permit daycare centers. Overall, we crafted these amendments to help city staff get to yes on simple projects more quickly and efficiently while maintaining aesthetic oversight on development. The project maintains the city's objective of ensuring new development is compatible with the neighborhood and facilitating neighbor participation. It also results in a simpler process, better efficiency, and achieves state requirements related to the Housing Element and other legislative updates. So following today's discussion, we anticipate returning to the Planning Commission in early January for a recommendation to City Council. After that, we'll go to Ordinance Committee and City Council in the spring. Thank you very much. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful and informative. Just really quick, I have a question. Would we be able to get these presentations in advance of the hearings? Because this was really helpful. We will now move on to public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to make comments on this specific item?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. At this time, I do have one speaker slip for public comments, so I'm going to invite Derek Booth up to the podium, though I see that others have public comment. You can bring it up to me, and I'll grab it from you. When you start speaking, I'll start the timing.
Thank you. It's nice to see all of you again. I'm sorry it's under these circumstances. I've written a letter to you on this subject, and I'll try not to go over the same points. Here, I'd really just like to emphasize one thing. The streamlining proposal is cast largely as an effort to improve the applicant experience and reduce the load on the single-family design board. These are worthy goals, but I do want to remind the board and the staff and the commission that the Single Family Design Board was originally created in 2007 to address what's described and things that I've read as an influx of McMansions, and to provide a way to honor and to protect the characteristics of residential neighborhoods in the city that make it such a great place to live. Planning staff has told me that they've been directed to treat applicants as clients, and I heard that too when I was a county staff person. But surely, the residents of the city should be their ultimate clients. I feel that this has been forgotten, such that now the staff will support and the Single Family Design Board will approve the overall bulk and scale of just about anything that seems to come across its desk, where guidelines are routinely abandoned when they don't suit the applicant's purpose, and where it's left to the neighborhood to call foul on omissions or outright misrepresentations in proposals. If you do nothing else in your recommendations to the City Council, please encourage the council to remind the Single Family Design Board of their original purpose for existing, to stiffen their spine, and just to say no in the face of clear transgressions to our city's design guidelines. And lastly, until evidence proves otherwise, retain yourselves, the Planning Commission, as an appealable body throughout every stage of the design review process. Even the current proposal for substantial conformance is large enough to drive, I'm not sure the right analogy, a truck through. At the time, Chairman Bauckey provided me and pointed me at other cities' substantial conformance guidelines, some of which I've reproduced in the letter to you, and I hope that you will carry them forward to the council. There's a point at which staff discretion and having to help us building permit plan checkers is really not appropriate where neighborhood interest and substantial debate and concern has been raised. We just don't trust the process. I'm really sorry to say that, but it's true. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Booth.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to Ellen Bildston.
Good afternoon. I'll apologize. I'm struggling with a cold at the moment, so I'll do my best. I'm an architect and representative of A I A advocacy. We put together a letter that unfortunately got to you pretty late in the process, but I'm hoping that you had a chance to see it. Overall, our group's assessment of where this process has landed, under the excellent guidance of Ted and Ellen Kokinda, is really, really positive. We think these are really great changes that are being proposed. We skimmed the document and overall thought it was extremely good. It was, as pointed out by Ted's presentation, based largely on the survey that was conducted in 2023 that highlighted a lot of problems with the process, and we think that many of the proposals addressed those directly. The one area of concern that we had was that we still see a fair amount of ambiguous language in what's required for the applicant to provide at the beginning of the process. There's still a lot of language in the document that says things like, "In some cases, things may be requested, and the board may need to know certain things," to provide more visual aids in the stream of the review of the project. And we think that ambiguity would be an ongoing problem to the process. With that, we think that A I A advocacy is very available to continue to meet with city staff and continue to improve the current ordinance proposal. And we also believe that it would be a very positive thing to have an annual or biannual review of the process and see how these changes are impacting the number of projects that are being heard by S F D B and how it's going. So we think that those types of changes are going to really improve everything overall. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I don't have any more speaker slips for in-person public comment, though if anyone would like to speak, you can approach the podium at this time. But I'm not seeing any movement, so I'll move to virtual participation, and we do have one hand raised. So Cass Enzberg, I'm going to allow you to speak. You should be able to unmute at this time.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Wardlow, Planning Commission, staff, and community. Special thanks to Mr. Hamilton Roll for his presentation and to Ms. Kokinda for their work on this very important streamlining measures. I am Cass Enzberg, and I am an architect here in town. I sent a letter that I hope you were able to read, and my apologies for not sending it earlier. I will just highlight a couple of points. First of all, I appreciate and fully support your work as Planning Commission, as well as design review and our city staff who manages the process. Design review, in my opinion, is a critique that is fundamental to the design process and to the realization of any good design. In my opinion, there is no guarantee for approval, nor should there be. Approval is granted when requirements are met and an acceptable design produced. This is the responsibility of the applicant and their designer. It is not the responsibility of the review board to design the project. Their responsibility is to be clear and reasonable, and I think some of the things that staff has come up with here will help to remove any questions or ambiguities that may exist right now. I have sadly seen many times where an applicant returns multiple times with designs that fail to meet neighborhood concerns or the intent of the comments given by the review board. In my experience, this is not the norm. Rather, applicants with a skilled designer and a good design that is sensitive to and has included neighbor support achieve design review approval in short order. This is the way to streamline a project, not by limiting the number of reviews to benefit proposed projects that have not convinced the board that they are ready to be approved. Meeting the conditions, including good neighbor policies and appropriate compatibility in terms of size, bulk, and scale and aesthetic, is the responsibility of the designer applicant team. The applicant has the power of a smooth, streamlined process by proposing a design that meets these basic and stated parameters. In summary, let's just remember the principles and importance of design review process, and quite frankly, the process of Planning Commission, and thank our design review staff, the Planning Commission, and all the design review boards for their service to Santa Barbara to ensure the quality and beauty of our built environment. With that, I support the staff's recommendations, and thank you again for your service.
Thank you. With that, I don't have any more speakers online, so I will acknowledge that we received written correspondence from Derek Booth, Kevin DuMayne, Matt Grease on behalf of the A I A Santa Barbara, and Cass Enzberg, and give it back to you.
Thank you. I will now open it up to my fellow commissioners for questions. Who would like to go first? It's not showing up on my screen.
Commissioner Bauckey is first on my screen. I will come look at yours.
So I'm not sure, but anyway, maybe it was leftovers.
Who would like to go first? We're just having technical.
I can go.
Okay, I see. Commissioner DeLucio.
Yeah, I will start, but I really didn't have my button pressed, but I will start. I'm happy to.
We're sorry.
Everybody was in queue, but I'll be happy to go first. I overall think this is an outstanding report that we got today, and a lot of work has gone into this, and it's going to be so cool, and we finally get this all together and we can move forward. I think most of it's in place here. I have to ask questions right now, not deliberate. I'll ask some questions. Does the city have an architect on staff?
Commissioner DeLucio, thank you. There is a city architect on staff on the public work side, and yeah, they're not necessarily associated directly with community development work. I think their role is more involved in capital projects.
Okay, thanks for answering that question. I'm kind of surprised.
If I could, through Chair Wardlow to Commissioner DeLucio. So for years, we had a lot of feedback requesting that there be a city architect within community development and particularly having more oversight over design review. And the city went through a hiring process to find an architect, and that hiring process ended up, it was a failed hiring, so we couldn't find the interest, or you know, there's all kinds of things, but generally... kinds of things, but generally, we didn't end up with a city architect. Instead, you ended up with me as the design review supervisor, so I'm sorry, but not sorry at the same time, but that has been reviewed and explored, and we just weren't successful with it, so we kind of have been, we went in a different direction.
I think staff does a great job. However, I feel like, so there's not a slot open to hire one in the future, so that, at this point.
I think that's correct.
With all the design boards here, there's not even a, well, the city I came for, we had an urban, is it urban designer role in that capacity? With all this going on with the boards, you would think that a representative would, especially for major projects, would be involved, like an architect, and be, come to the meetings or something, so. But that's just my, I guess it's a comment and a question, and I'm very surprised that that role is not in place.
And if I may, Commissioner DeLucio, I think we've historically relied on our design review boards as being experts throughout this entire process. We have people in the audience here from AIA. We rely very heavily on their expertise, their design interest, their design input. So despite not having a licensed architect or an urban designer, that very specific role on staff, we try to utilize our community resources.
Which we have excellent community resources. I just think that by having such a role would bring more credibility to the process, is just my opinion. So, next question. I know that right now, we're trying to streamline this, and a lot of stuff goes to the hearing officer, I noticed. It's more, is it minor zoning exemptions that they get a lot of? I've been watching the meetings, it's like, it's just, they need minor modifications, and so that would pretty much roll up to the administrative level in the future?
Commissioner DeLucio, currently, minor zoning exceptions are reviewed at design review exclusively. Appeals of those decisions would be heard at either city council or planning commission, depending on the design board, but those are all design review decisions. What we're proposing is to keep fence, hedge, and wall minor zoning exceptions for overheight fences, walls, and hedges at the design review level and require a public hearing, but there are other design review M Z Es, we call them, that are simpler. They're just raising the height a little bit and a setback, and our thinking is that if we can evaluate those and make sure they meet standards in the municipal code, and they're not exceeding those standards, that staff can administratively approve those.
So what's going before the hearing officer? A lot of modifications, like I need to encroach a couple of feet here or there, so that will remain at the hearing officer?
Correct. We're not proposing to change anything under the staff hearing officer's purview.
Okay.
And if I may clarify, so when we created Title 30, and it was launched back in 2018, the minor zoning exception process was created, and so under Title 28, it requires modifications. That's a more onerous process to get a modification. So one of the streamlining efforts then was to create minor zoning exceptions, and now we're taking that one step further and taking most of those minor zoning exceptions that just are kind of rubber stamp approvals at single-family design board and our other design review boards and making them staff-level decisions. So it's just a constant iteration and process improvement.
Okay. The other question is, I know when they come before modifications, come before the hearing officer, a staff person, a planner will be there, and there's a pretty detailed staff report, which, very comprehensive staff report. I know we're trying to streamline things, and I'm just wondering if you guys haven't looked at that in order to streamline that process, because I'm sure that costs the applicants some money also. And staff is, I don't have staff is making, is, we're possibly, the city's supposed to charge what it takes to do something, and I don't, I have a feeling we're not making, we're not evening it out.
I think that's correct, and actually, it's interesting. You mentioned this, Commissioner DeLucio, yes, there's always ways to look at. We're obligated to write staff reports when a project goes to the staff hearing officer or planning commission, but certainly, the level of formality and the depth, I mean, we've tried to cut back where there are coastal development permits for ADUs, for example, that, you know, we're forced to take those to the staff hearing officer, but there's always ways we could try to reduce that amount of staff time when it's really, again, a non-controversial project or fairly acceptable.
Another question is, so when before design review board, so by taking some of the minor stuff away from them, which they would rubber stamp anyway, would give them more time to focus on, I'll call them major projects, major design, and is that what the intent would be also?
That's the idea, and that has multiple benefits, both from the staff side and from, well, from staff for applicants and for the design review board members. You know, there are so many single-family design board projects currently that we have to have two full-time staffers to handle all those projects, whereas H L C and A B R only have one. In addition, the, lost my train of thought, sorry.
Well, I could just add on to what Mr. Hamilton-Roll was saying, that a handful of years ago, we actually went to city council and modified the code to reduce the number of board members on S F D B from seven to five, because we were having a lot of challenges with appointments, finding, getting quorum. So what was happening, we'd have a lot of, like, there's just this huge number of projects that have to go to public hearings for decision, because we couldn't administratively approve things. So development projects were backing up, we were losing quorum, board members were getting burned out, I had board members leave in the middle of their terms, and it was a really stressful time. And so by alleviating some of the quorum issues and trying to just alleviate the sheer volume of projects that they see, again, the intention is that we, they're still responsible for having oversight over the major projects that have big implications for the neighborhood, but just to be conscious of, these are volunteers, it takes a lot of staff time, and what can we take off that the community generally finds acceptable?
I'll ask one more question, and I'll let my other commissioners drive in here. So when these projects come before design review, obviously, they see the design and all that stuff, but do they get a staff report also? Is there, because I know, where I'm leading with this is the neighborhood compatibility, where I know they've had some issues, problems wrapping their hands around neighborhood compatibility, and I know you did some, you sort of revised it, you took some away from them, and with some of the land use type findings, you guys will, can make, and then they can deal with the design type of neighborhood compatibility. But I notice, I watched the meetings, when you go, like, the hearing officer has these reports, and when you watch a design board, I don't see, if I look up, I don't see any staff reports. I just, it's like, almost to me like it's like free flow, so where, and I know that creative people are kind of free flow in a sense, but where is the discipline there? And to help them out?
That's a good question, Commissioner DeLucio. Part of the challenge there is that there are just so many design review projects on, you know, you have a two-week cycle for full board and commission projects, and you have multiple items per agenda, you have the same staff person running those agendas, and, you know, they'd be writing potentially 10 staff reports every two weeks. It gets challenging to implement, whereas with our development review team, that's a bigger team of staffers, and they are, you know, although the show hearings are, I think, every week, it's fewer staffers per hearing, basically. So there's, it's a little bit easier in the timelines with development reviewers, such that you can facilitate a full staff report. With design review, it hasn't quite been achievable. However, I will say that for more complex projects, projects involving multiple discretionary approvals, or projects where staff thinks that the design board might benefit from a memo or, you know, additional explanation, we have prepared miniature staff reports or memos.
But there's a checklist you go through before you decide who's going to be reviewing it, and then it, so when it gets up to design review, that's where it belongs, and it's in a way, in a way where it can be heard, and a lot of, you know, a lot of the I's are crossed and the T's are crossed, I's are dotted or whatever, you know what I'm saying? How does it, all of a sudden, it gets up to that level of design review, staff is reviewing it first, and it's in a, and it's in a place where it can go to design review to be evaluated. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner DeLucio. And just a couple other thoughts is that, you know, when we get new board members, we do a lot of training and have them go through the guidelines, and it's, you know, with any guideline, there's always a little bit of a learning curve, and when you look through more projects and you get more experience, then you start to understand what are those, you know, how do the guidelines connect? How can I use the guidelines as a tool to make the required findings that are before the single-family design board? But it's also the responsibility of the applicant. You know, a lot of what our job is, is to communicate, hey, you have design guidelines that you are required to, you know, that you need to make sure that your project complies with, because that's what, again, the board is going to be looking at your projects against these guidelines, and then they're going to be making recommendations. So there's a lot of responsibility on the applicants to be familiar with it and to kind of be able to create their own argument to, before the board, of like, how they think they meet them and or not.
So design review is not going to go away at the administrative level either, correct? It's going to be design review and regulations, you know, that you're going to be using the regulations that have design in it, in the regulations in order to approve the windows and doors and stuff like that, correct?
That is correct. There are proposed design standards within the proposed zoning ordinance.
Because I'm looking at the first objective, it says reduce the number of single-family development projects subject to design review. It's really subject to design review before the design review board. It's not, design review doesn't go away.
Correct. There's, I think there's sort of a shifting of, to administrative design review, right? So if you meet certain standards, then we're effectively doing administrative design review when we're doing zoning plan checks.
And they're objective design reviews.
They're objective standards, yeah.
In that sense, okay. Those are my questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner DeLucio. Commissioner Barnwell, I mean, Commissioner Bauckey, if you have a question, or please click your thing, because it got messed up. So if you'd like to go next, I'll go to you. Commissioner Bauckey.
First off, thank you for all the hard work. I know that this is a big, big lift and undertaking, and making sure it all matches up, you change one thing, and you go deal with something else. So they really understand the significant effort getting something like this before us, so thank you on that. I've got three areas I'd like to get a better understanding. First off is, and Mr. Booth made some comments, is how we drew our lines as to changes in substantial conformance. Could you walk us through what our current role is, what we're proposed to do, and how you made those determinations?
Thank you, Commissioner Bauckey. To the secretary, if we could have the staff P C on the screen, please. These are the proposed substantial conformance criteria. Currently, this doesn't exist in the code or the guidelines. So these are criteria that, in consultation with community members and design review members, we came up with these to try to give an objective standard for changes to approved plans. Now, oh, go ahead. I was just going to say, I think we really tried to get at the things that would be most important when looking at changes to approved plans. Main things would be conditions of approval and height, so if you have a condition of approval that the single-family design board or another review body made, if you do revision to a plan, that revision should absolutely reflect that condition of approval. And basically, what this allows for is if we see a plan not be consistent with any one of these criteria, staff can refer the project back for revised project design approval, so another full approval hearing. Or if it's a really kind of minor change, we can refer a project to the single-family design board for a decision.
Personally, looking at this, most of them make sense. The one that just doesn't make sense of why something would change that much between, you know, something that was approved is the floor area. What, in what world would all of a sudden you have 150 square feet more of a project from A to B, especially when things are drawn in CAD now? And I have a hard time with that one, but the other ones, the height they can get, because sometimes the site conditions get to that, and that one, I'm having a hard time with.
Commissioner Bauckey, and through the chair. That's really intended to address comments that come through the building plan check review. Often, there are times, you know, they haven't included room for mechanical equipment, or various things that just were not anticipated, and then they end up becoming, needing to become part of the floor plan. So things come up. There are also times, though, where people change their mind, right? Something changes between when they had their project reviewed, and they decide, oh, I really would like a bigger closet or a bigger bathroom. So that happens as well, and we just wanted to provide some flexibility to address it.
Okay. And now, I understand your logic. Don't agree, but that's okay. That's how this works. Okay. So is that it on substantial, or you have something else?
I just want to thank you, Commissioner Bauckey. So currently, as Mr. Hamilton-Roll mentioned, we don't really have this information in, and I think we heard a lot from appellants, from, you know, we had a number of conversations with Mr. Booth, and understand that, you know, there's, we want to build some trust, rebuild trust with staff, and making sure that we can point to these, we have these objective standards. But right now, the way it works is if there's some, after project design approval and final approval, something comes in, in the building permit phase, and they have a completely different massing, or they go from, I want to do, I'm going from a three-story house down to a two-story house, like, that's really, that's such a major change, that's obvious, we're going to send that back to single-family design board for a revised project design approval, because there's so much massing change. And when there's not, when it's not that obvious, then we take it for either final approval or review after final. Both are kind of, you know, where there's, the purview is looking at it through the lens of substantial conformance. So usually, the board's doing that. So we've often kind of relied on the board to make that call when it tends to be not the most obvious decision. And here, again, we're just trying to ensure that we can point to things and say, okay, we're, you know, especially if something's controversial. I mean, this is just the objective, but in, within these guidelines, we also identify, like, if there's something that's so touchy, it's just not worth, you know, let's look at this and be able to send it back if we need to.
Yeah. I appreciate that thought process. The next area is, is, has there been any discussion and thought about working towards turning our guidelines into objective standards?
Thank you, Commissioner Bauckey. Yes, there has, and in fact, there is a state law that basically prohibits agencies from creating new subjective standards and guidelines. So if we create new guidelines, they need to be more objective going forward, and I think our proposed single-family design board guidelines are a step toward that. They're based on existing subjective guidelines, and we're trying to make them more objective as we go. I think we've really, where we've really made progress with having a more objective process is through the Title 30 zoning amendments that introduce objective design standards for certain project elements that are currently in the guidelines. We anticipate that to result in a lot fewer design review projects having to go for discretionary review while still being able to maintain a level of aesthetic oversight.
And if I may add, we had a lot of conversation with our S F D B working group and our, who also had AIA members on it, and we thought initially, well, let's think about this, like, if we're doing a second-story addition, is there something that we can just approve? If you, you're set back 15 feet, that you don't exceed 1,000 square feet, you know, just certain objective standards? And there was a lot of concern from, that if you create such objective standards, then people that are in the code, then everyone's going to design to that, and it may not be the most aesthetically pleasing building, or something that really works for the neighborhood, or there is just other considerations. So we, again, try So we, again, tried to make things as objective as possible and kind of moving in that direction and create, taking a lot of the principles that were guidelines and put them in as standards. And so this was kind of the, the first pass, but still keeping some of the, the larger concepts, not really taking objective standards to like a second story addition.
I appreciate your response because it's a balancing act. I understand it because design review can get you a better product, but at the same time, having standards sometimes simplifies and at least puts boundaries on the discussion, which you're not like dealing with things that are just, you should have been there in the first place. I'll, I'll move on to my last, last topic area, which is something that, I'm trying to understand how we use FAR because FAR is based upon size of property, correct? And then we have this 20-house rule or concept, and you could help explain the thought process of that. Because I'm trying to understand truth in zoning and equity between property owners that just because, well, you know, like, there's a situation I had personally, and I'll just put it out there. Now, I had a property that was an acre in size in a neighborhood that had houses from 7,000 square feet down to 1,500 and neighbors that had lots at 5,000 to an acre. And the 20-house rule was like we had everything and the folks at the Single Family Design Board was always going, well, your house is too big. And I go, well, the property's like four or five times bigger than us. And it's, it's a question of, does that process create a, well, call creation of homogeneous Irvine of Santa Barbara or allow us, Santa Barbara to be Pasadena, which has all kinds of variety from big mansions to small houses? How does this work? What are we doing to change the FAR, how that process works in this conversation?
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Bauckey. So the maximum FAR applies to lots that are 15,000 square feet and less and developed with two or more stories. So you have to, in order to be subject to a max FAR, those are your parameters. With the 20-closest house or 20-closest lot study, that is something that is in the SFB guidelines and on the city website in our FAR supplemental application as a supplemental submittal item for properties that exceed 85% of the FAR. Back when the SFB was established in the early aughts, there was a lot of discussion about FAR and what the, what the house sizes should be, what the square footages should be. And if you look in the Single Family Residence Design Guidelines, there's a chart that has all of those square footages and what those percentages of the max FAR are. In short, we're not proposing to change anything about the maximum FAR as part of this project. That was discussed so thoroughly when SFB was created and, you know, we didn't really have any input from any particular source that indicated that should be changed. However, we are trying to, with this project, trying to simplify how sizable can scale or looked at and recognize that the 20-closest home study is only one tool in the toolbox for evaluating home size. You're absolutely right that the, the study can result in kind of some wacky numbers, especially if you have different sized lots next to each other and, you know, maybe one is subject to max FAR and is developed with two stories and the other is developed only with one story, right? So you're, you're kind of looking at apples and oranges. In addition, that study only looks at gross square footage, not net square footage like the, the max FAR uses. So this is, and we acknowledge this, this is a confusing aspect for especially members of the public, but it is not intended to be an end-all, be-all kind of calculation for how big a house should be. It's just one of the tools that the Single Family Design Board and the HLC use to look at house size. They can definitely use other tools like 3D renderings, streetscape perspectives, as long as those are drawn correctly, are also very helpful and, you know, potentially 3D models to evaluate how big a house is going to be in relation to neighbors.
And if I could add, I've seen similar issues. Not a lot, but there is one project in particular that was on a really large lot and it was a project that was proposing a pretty substantive size residence and, but all the lots adjacent to it were significantly smaller. So it was kind of apples and oranges and, and it even, it didn't have, it wasn't an FAR requirement, rather, it was, again, exceeded 15,000 square feet. So it was just a guideline. And I watched the SFB struggle a little bit. And in that particular instance, I had meetings with the applicant to say, okay, you know, you really need to, if, if you're interested in getting this through, you need to kind of help them understand where, you know, the, your lot in relation to these other lots and kind of help them, kind of bring them along as to why a larger lot could support a larger development. And it kind of makes sense and you don't necessarily, that like means that you, oh, now I have to shrink this house down. But on the other end, I think that in this community, there's, there are going to be homes that are just too large and that there's just not a community interest. And so even currently, we have an automatic design review trigger in our code for a residence that's over 4,000 square feet. Because again, there was a community interest in not having something so massive. So even if you have a large lot that could accommodate something, but I think in, in the instance that you're talking about, I think it's really just trying to help them see like this lot, it doesn't look like the rest and it can accommodate a larger development area or development envelope. And I can still be conscious about where I'm developing and again, it doesn't have to be, doesn't match the scale because that could really differ. And so it's just, since we had that project, we, Mr. Hamilton Roll did multiple trainings with the Single Family Design Board on FAR and the 20-closest lots and what are we looking at? How do we understand what this means? You know, how should we look at this in context with the scale of a lot or the ultimate size? And since then, they haven't struggled as much with FAR because of that training. And we just, as I mentioned, that handful of years ago, when we were, just had this backlog of development projects, there was a lot of burnout with SFB members. We didn't have, it was almost, we didn't feel comfortable asking them to take more time out of their work lives to do, to do trainings. So once we kind of reduced the number of members, kind of got the quorum issues out of, kind of in control, we focused very much on training them. So I think it's so much about training our board members so that they, they get that and they can have that sophisticated review when there is a lot that comes in like that.
Okay. Thank you. And I appreciate that knowledge and how the process has clearly evolved over the years because, you know, the situation I was talking about is like 2007 when they were brand, brand new. And so, and it's good to hear that that training has been happening and this 20-house thing is not the only criteria. So those are my questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Bauckey. I'll now hear from Commissioner Peterson.
Thank you. And thank you all for bringing this before us. I know this is a lot of work. There are a lot of pages involved in this. So that's my first point. My first question is, we've heard already today about limited staff capacity in terms of review and process. Do you all have an estimate of how much staff time as a percentage of your time goes into preparing SFB agenda items or in general, amount of staff time that's spent getting ready for discretionary review by boards or commissions, agendas, mailings, noticing?
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. In short, the answer could be 100%. We have two staff members devoted to SFB. We have one who handles full board projects and one who handles consent. And it's their full-time job to basically prepare projects to get on an agenda. And that involves multiple steps, including application completeness review, routing to different departments, preparing application completeness letters, communicating with applicants, preparing notices, preparing agendas. So it's all wrapped into getting to, you know, the project to an agenda. We don't really have quantitative estimates, just, you know, currently of the percentage of time that a staff member spends, say, doing an application completeness review or preparing a mailed notice. We do have a fee study coming up in the next year that will look in greater detail at that and we can, you know, if and when we provide an update on how this project is going after implementation, we can come to you with more information on that.
And if I could add to that, to Commissioner Peterson, that especially with Single Family Design Board, it really, the amount of time it takes to process a problem, a project can really, there's a large range. And because what's unique about SFB is that to construct or to design a single-family home, you are not required to be a licensed architect. So sometimes we have the, you know, incredible architects who are proposing single-family homes, you know, hire, you know, property owner hires them, they know how to get through the process, they know our application completeness review, they know what materials, they, they just know how to package everything. And then we have homeowners who might just like try to figure out how to do it themselves and that can take a lot of time, a lot of iteration, a lot of hand-holding clarification, learning curve, all of that. So it really runs the gamut on just the amount of time. So anytime we do a fee study, it's really the average time it takes. But there can be, again, with single-family, it tends to be a little bit unique because we have such a range of applicants who come in and so there's a different level of need and customer service required as part of that.
The idea is getting to more ministerial, ministerial review will free up some staff time to do other things like approving projects.
The, the idea is that we can, the, there's kind of different levels to it. So taking some things that require design review hearings, taking those and making those administrative so we don't have to take them to a hearing and we can approve them either that someone could submit straight to a building permit application and we can do the design review right there concurrently with the building permit application. And then there are some things that trigger design review and no longer trigger design review because we've created objective standards in the code. And if you design to that, then just go straight to building permit. And again, we've kind of created the, the standards based on what our Single Family Design Board guidelines show. So again, the intention is that we're honoring the community interest in materials and design standards and relied on all of kind of our architectural predecessors, who, many of whom are still here and who've helped create this document and this board. So yeah, there's kind of different levels to it. But yes, ultimately, we free up staff time for hearings to then be able to do staff-level approvals moving through.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Peterson, may I just add a quick note to that? Another kind of angle of this is that, you know, we don't anticipate this resulting in too much more work for staff, you know, since we will still be doing work to move projects through. But where the reduction in time is really going to be noticed is on the applicant and the homeowner end where instead of going through, you know, a several months-long process to get their project approved at a public hearing, they're going through, you know, probably 30 days to six weeks total from when they submit a building permit application to when they get their permit issued, ideally.
Thank you. I want to move on to something else. So on page five of our staff report, it's, the first paragraph says, "In reviewing three years of SFB project data, staff found that approximately 45% of projects were building or site alterations that did not involve any changes to floor area and were instead routine maintenance, upgrades, repairs, et cetera." And then if we go back to page two of our staff report, this, what we're reviewing now, project aims to reduce the total number of projects that require SFB review by more than 20%, streamline the public hearing process for single-family projects and provide more flexibility within the zoning ordinance and design guidelines to reduce permitting barriers. So how did we arrive at the goal essentially of having 20% fewer projects come before SFB rather than 45% where plans are not, floor plans are not changing?
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. The 21% reduction is again, just a bare minimum, what we know we can expect that will be reduced. It's based on projects that are currently triggered that we know for sure will not be triggered by the proposed code. That said, we've not had time yet to do a really in-depth analysis and get a super accurate number, partly because we're kind of comparing apples and oranges between the old code and the proposed, or the current code and the proposed code. Therefore, it's a little tricky to determine exactly which projects out of that three-year dataset would be triggered and which wouldn't. That said, I wouldn't be surprised if the actual project reduction is closer to that 45% amount. And that's kind of, you know, on the high end of where we'd like to be. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I guess framing this as a question, you know, we're exempting from what's required by SFB review or we're exempting almost, under this draft ordinance, we're exempting most alterations that don't, that substantially conform. Certainly that percentage, if what you're saying is 45% of the projects are not changing floor area and were routine maintenance mostly, then certainly the percentage is probably going to be higher than 21% or most likely.
I think that's, I think that's a fair assumption. The projects that wouldn't be eligible or that wouldn't, I'm sorry, the projects that would still get triggered would be wholesale exterior alterations with site work, you know, things that actually would potentially have an impact on the community, an impact on the streetscape, where something completely different is proposed. The things that we're trying not to trigger are projects that don't change the massing but just change kind of the, you know, the frosting on the cake, so to speak. But they result in a cohesive architectural style or they match the existing to a certain extent. So essentially, what it would take to come up with a, you know, a more definitive estimate of the number of projects that would be reduced is we'd have to look at all 440 of these projects that we reviewed and analyze them against this new proposed code and to try to determine whether they would trigger design review or not. So we just haven't quite had the time to do that at this point.
And Commissioner Peterson, if I could add to that, I would just say, yes, staff's estimate was definitely conservative. You know, we wanted to take a conservative approach. I think you also can't underestimate how much people want to avoid our process. And so if there's a standard that they can design up to, to avoid the process, I think that's going to start happening. So we may see even more than what we anticipate.
Thank you. Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Commissioner Barnwell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you go to page 25 on your presentation? I think it's 25.
Commissioner Barnwell, you mean on the PowerPoint?
Yeah, that, those little numbers in the lower left-hand corner there, page 20, slide 25. Yeah, there we go. I'm curious, how did you come to the numbers in the proposed? For example, accessory buildings, current 250, proposed 800. Why wasn't it 750 or 850? Where did those, how did you come with that?
Great question.
And this also applies, if I may, I think it's on page 19. You have, somewhere around page 19, slide number 19, you have another one where you've come up with square footage numbers and I just wondered, yeah, that guy right there. Where did, how'd you do that?
Great question. Thank you, Commissioner Barnwell. These two slides, slides 20 and 25 are related. 20, the one that we're on, has to do with mailed noticing thresholds. When a project requires a mailed notice, it also requires a public hearing, obviously. And in order to administratively approve a project, it can't require a mailed notice. So that's kind of why those numbers have to line up. So that's kind of why those numbers have to line up. So the mailed notice can't, or the mailed notice threshold has to exceed what can be approved administratively essentially. Now, how we actually got to these numbers is the state's already allowing the construction of an 800-square-foot accessory dwelling unit ministerially without any kind of design review. To be consistent with that, and just to allow more flexibility and encourage folks to develop one-story buildings at the back of their house and be able to add square footage, we're proposing to be able to administratively approve up to 800 square feet on the first story.
Yes. Well, let's just go to decks, for example. You've got 200 to 400. What if somebody came in with a 450-foot deck? I mean, they're out of luck, right? So that's what you're trying to do by these guidelines, is to have people come in with a 400-foot deck, correct? So that they, they read the code and they see what is allowed, to allow them to have a streamlined process, so they're going to do a 400-foot deck.
We think that the new ordinance will definitely encourage folks to design to those zoning limits. We certainly expect to see people request exceptions at design review to exceed those. And these numbers are based on what projects that we have administratively approved in the past. We looked at a bunch of administrative approvals over the last number of years and also tried to calibrate these numbers with those. So we were able to commonly approve up to 400 square feet if it met certain criteria.
So it's kind of based on the experiences you've had and the applications that have come before you in times past, and that's how you've arrived at this?
Correct.
And Commissioner Barnwell, if I may add, again, we had our single-family design board subcommittee, our working group subcommittee, and, which included S F D B members, architects, and then A I A members, some who are sitting behind me. And so a lot of this was driven of like, what's too much? You know, that's kind of where you start. It's like, what's, what's maybe too small, but then what's too big, that that's just not appropriate. And so that's kind of where the, how we navigate some of these conversations. And again, we're trying to align everything and, and look at what, what's acceptable, look at different examples, talk about it. So there was a lot that went into it.
Okay, thank you. By the way, before I go any further, I agree with the comments by my esteemed colleague, Mr. Baokyuan. He said that this is a Herculean task, truly a Herculean task. And it's probably not over when we're done on this one either. We'll still have to tickle it. But, and I also want to compliment you guys. In your presentation today, you're all, you're very well spoken, and you seem to understand this very well. And I appreciate that. I have a question on, just out of curiosity, on hedge heights. The eight-foot hedge height, is that after the front yard setback? Can you build an eight-foot hedge right on the sidewalk front line? Because I thought you couldn't, but I see them all over town, and everybody says, oh, I can do an eight-foot hedge height. And I thought, I thought that had to be setback. Is that wrong?
Commissioner Barnwell, that is correct. The, so the current code allows an eight-foot hedge right at the front property line. The distinction is that it, it can't be within what's known as the visibility triangle, which is 10 feet back from the driveway and 10 feet to the side.
Yeah, right.
Currently, an eight-foot hedge is allowed, though. And that has to do with hedges having kind of a softer appearance and effect on the property than a fence. And that's why fence, the allowable height for a fence is lower at the front lot line.
I, I am a general contractor, and, and much of my literature that comes my way is talking about modular housing. I didn't see you guys address, or did you address specifically modular housing, making it easier to just crane in something and set it down? Or is that already an easy process? And somehow, how does it fit into these things?
That's a great question. And currently, modular housing is protected by state law in that it can't be subject to design review except for very specific things. And if I'm, if my memory serves, it's exterior cladding, basically like your siding and your roofing. So those are the only two things that can be subject to design review. That's a current regulation. That said, we really don't see a lot of modular housing requests in the city. I will say that we do have a pre-approved accessory dwelling unit program that does have a few, I think, one prefab design. So that is one area where we were seeing those.
And if I may add to that, Commissioner Barnwell, that the current trigger, single-family design board triggers, has a specific design review trigger for modular housing, which doesn't really comply with, you know, the state law in, as a whole. So we just struck that. And again, we're just referring to state law based on what can be done.
Okay. Because I've heard much conversation, and I don't know it to be a fact, but that it was, quote, "difficult to do modular housing" or frowned upon. And I, and I would like to see that not be the case, but I don't know the details of our code on that issue. It seems to me, we have a lot, we have, from my times past and my history with the city, the community development department has been suffering, like all the departments have, from budgetary issues and staffing and being able to have full staff, et cetera. And it does seem to me as though some of this could be, or might be thought of as a potential for fee increases. Now, I know that you mentioned, I heard you mention a comment earlier about fee increases, but have you done some studies associated with some of these reductions as, and also some increases in the fees? I won't go any further on it. It's a complex issue. But it seems like we should be having a parallel discussion about that. And we should be, it seems as though a global look, not just at this, as a staff reduction speeding up for the homeowner, but from our own internal needs to have more money, free up staff, to do other things, et cetera.
Commissioner Barnwell, I'll take a first stab at that and then have Ms. Kokinda supplement. As we've proposed it, the process wouldn't result in too much more or necessarily different work than we're already doing. We already have a fee structure that would, that captures administrative reviews at three different levels, including one that involves a good amount of back and forth with the applicant, property research, et cetera. The fees to go to a public hearing are higher than the administrative approval fees. And I, I do expect some change to occur in the fee structure, you know, after this is implemented and we, we study and get a better idea of what it actually takes to do this as far as staff time. But I, I don't see a potential for too, too much change. And I'll let Ms. Kokinda take it from there.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Barnwell. So we, again, maybe handful of, I'm going to say, everything is a handful of years ago. But it probably, maybe five or six years ago, the city went to 100% cost recovery for our land development fees. So it was a different change. We didn't want to subsidize land development through the general fund. And that was, I think, 2018 was the year we did our last land development team, like fee study. And so what Mr. Hamilton-Roll was mentioning earlier, that fee study is happening in fiscal, or 2026, so in this next year. So I expect that to really outline the time it takes. Hopefully, we have this ordinance, and ordinance in place to then be able to react to current code and how much time things take. And Ms. Belts here on my right has also been working, using our Acela software permitting for staff to be able to do time tracking. So for each of these projects to kind of use that time to have more, you know, useful data of like, what is the time expectation. But generally speaking, I think we've been increasing our annual fees roughly 5% and adding new fees here or there as different processes come through until we get a new LDT fee study. So that hopefully will, again, illuminate some of these changes and, and be more responsive to what does it take generally? And are there other efficiencies we could have?
Thank you. Then I'm, I'm glad, I'm heartened to hear that. And I, I don't, I had a couple of other questions, but I'll hang on. I won't mention them right now. I would like to leave the audience with this one thing, and I don't know how we get back at it because it was such a political hot potato. But we changed the hedge heights a few years ago. And I would just invite everyone in the room to notice that the charm of our town is the ability to see the architecture from the street and not an eight-foot green hedge. And I think we have made a grievous mistake with that hedge height. And I don't know if that's something that we can talk about here. But it, when someone points it out to you and you look at it, you go, oh, my God, look at all of that. So I leave it with that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnwell. Commissioner Wiskom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, I'm going to get probably down in the weeds a little more. The, I just want to, just want a clarification on the open yard change. So if your lot is less than 6,000 square feet, you're reduced from 1,250 square feet down to 800 square feet of open yards.
Correct.
And the minimum dimension for all lots is reduced to 15 feet by 20 feet. Is that correct? So it doesn't matter what size lot you have?
Commissioner Wiskom, I think that's correct. I'll have Ms. Belts correct me if I'm wrong. But the, the reduction, okay, the reduction from 20 by 20 to 15 by 20 applies to single unit and two-unit developments regardless of lot size.
Okay, so it's all lots?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying? Okay. Okay, good. It just wasn't clear to me. Okay. And then I wanted to go to, I'm on Exhibit A, which is the Title 30 draft. Determination of Existing Grade. It's on page 27. For purposes of establishing existing grade as defined in this title, the topographic elevations of the natural ground surface as it existed five years prior to the date of the application for grading, filling, or other site alterations is used. Why the five years? That just seems, there's people that, that, excuse me, do grading. I know it's happened in our neighborhood. And then they apply. So, you know, it's been altered right before they apply. So where did the five years come from? Just, I'm not trying to get too much in the weeds, but that just doesn't seem right to me. But...
That's a good question, Commissioner Wiskom. The five-year limitation already exists in the code, and it's located in the Definitions Chapter, which is at the front of the code, and it's often overlooked. So that's why we're putting it in this section it's proposed in, to add a little bit more clarity. This issue does typically arise when you have grading permits that are issued separately from building permits, and somebody does grading before doing their full development. And so the intent is to provide, or to prevent situations where someone artificially raises the grade before developing.
Okay.
So if I may, so there is a really good example that came up, Commissioner Wiskom, that there was a subdivision that was approved by the Planning Commission, I think it was Planning Commission. And there was grading involved with the, that subdivision, but there were no houses proposed. And so those houses could come two years, three years, five years, 10 years, they might never come. But if it, let's say someone raises the grade significantly and then builds a two- or three-story home on top of that, we put five years as the cap because we really wanted to, again, kind of look at what is the overall, kind of, height is just one example of an impact to a neighborhood if you've got development there. So we kind of, we're looking at the existing grade within that five-year timeframe because it could have implications for whatever future development is on that if there's no development proposed at that time.
Okay, I, I understand, yeah, I understand that. I, I just think there's got to be some convoluted examples where it works the other way. But so...
If I may, it, it has confused people before.
Yeah.
And I know that we've had a lot of internal conversations about just kind of what makes sense sometimes, or, well, there's just assumptions, well, isn't the existing grade what is out there today? And that may not have been the case. So there's different reasons for it.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. And then I'm going on to, this is, again, this is 30.15.120, which is screening. And Mr. Hamilton-Rolls, I sent these questions to you ahead of time. But the standard methods, the standard methods for screening and buffering of surface parking, mechanical equipment, and any other objects or land uses as required by this code to minimize visual noise and privacy impacts to surrounding property, writes away. Oh, that's not the question I was thinking of. But do we require now screening of trash receptacles? Or is that gone?
It's, it's required.
It's still required.
Section 30.140.220, which is trash recycling and personal outdoor storage. Got them written down here. And section 140, 3140.155 for screening. So we, we did move screening standards from the Definitions Chapter in 30.15 to 3140.155.
Okay.
And that, that covers trash enclosures.
So it's still, still required. Okay, good. And then, oh, this was the one that I didn't get. So then, on page 151, Exhibit A, number six, landscape buffer requirement. The physical separation between vehicle areas and residential structures must be provided in the form of a landscape planter with a minimum interior width of three feet located between any vehicle parking or maneuvering area and the former garage door. The depth of the planter may be reduced only as necessary to maintain the minimum required parking space dimension within the driveway. So I'm not following what that means.
Commissioner Wiskom, this is, this happens when we have ADU garage conversions. So if someone's converting their garage to an ADU, they have to remove the garage door. And the idea is to improve the aesthetics of, of that area so that you don't have your driveway paving just ending right at the, the wall of the structure. It's also to provide a little bit of a safety buffer between the driveway and the, the building so that you're not able to pull right up to the building.
So you're putting the landscape buffer right in front of where the garage door used to be?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So, okay. Because we just saw a project a couple weeks ago, I don't know, Oliver Road. Yeah. And, and he's actually got to, he's converting his garage, but he's actually going back morphic because he needs to tandem park, and he can't hang over into the, into the setback. So he's moving it. So there's no space there for any landscaping. So you're saying then, so in that case, the depth of the planter would be nil because the minimum required parking space must be in his driveway. Okay, Allison's, yeah, she's nodding her head. Okay, now I get it. That just confused me because we had just seen that project. So, okay. And then this is just a clarification, and I think maybe it just needs a cleanup. But on page 217, in Exhibit A, under B, alterations do not result in an overall roof pitch greater than a four-inch rise over a 12-inch run or a roof pitch to match the existing development on site. I think what you mean is, or you can have a roof pitch that does match it. So you need to change that language.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. I assumed that was the case. Okay. And then I want to go on to public scenic views. We see this a lot in the coastal zone, and it's pretty well-defined in the L C P. But otherwise, it's not, as far as I know. So I, I want to know where we put a definition and how we handle this, because it's very subjective, I know. And I think when you get out of the coastal zone, you know where the public views are because we have those view corridor diagrams. But what do we do?
Great question. Preserving views has been, and this is public views, has been a goal of the S F D B since the board was created. And as you mentioned, the local coastal plan does... And as you mentioned, the local coastal plan does have certain scenic views within the coastal zone that are defined and mapped. So that's one, those are a set of views that SFB has the ability to weigh in on and protect. The California Environmental Quality Act also defines public scenic views as generally being from public gathering places like parks and the wharf, et cetera. So the SFB's findings to approve a project include special consideration for protecting those views and prevent things like mass vegetation removal or scarification of hillsides by excessive grading.
Okay, so it's really from public places to view something? And is that defined here? Because I see you mention the term a lot, but I don't see it defined, and maybe, maybe if it's not defined, it should be defined, because that's very confusing, because I could be standing in my driveway and someone's building a house above me that might block the mountains, but that's not a public view. Yeah. So Ms. Debaska shaking her head, no, it's not, so.
Right, and Commissioner Wiskom, I think if we expanded on that or tried to define that a little bit more, kind of just identify these items, we could put that in the guidelines and have that documented and have a place to point to so that it's clear to members of the public and applicants and board members of, you know, when they're thinking about the finding they have to make, here's the, what we could do there.
Yeah, that would be extremely helpful, extremely helpful. Thank you for that. Okay, and then, oh, okay, and then I'm just going to go on to, oh, so projects over 100% FAR require story polls, and it depends what the configuration of the project is, how many story polls you need. So might we add a requirement for how long story polls need to be up? Because sometimes we see projects, they are gone the minute we leave the site. And I'm thinking that, you know, if a neighbor wants to, you know, 48 hours or something, is that possible?
Commissioner Wiskom, so right now, we have our visual aids application, which identifies a minimum of seven days and up through the hearing, but that is not, it's not codified, nor is it in our guidelines, so we could always add that to the guidelines in addition to just being the.
I just, I think it's reasonable for some neighbors can really have a look, and, you know, people are busy, so, okay, so you'll put that in the guidelines then? Okay. Okay. Okay, and then on page, so I'm in, I'm sorry, I'm in draft guidelines now, so on page 710 and 711, I wasn't sure if there was any difference in this. Number one is property owners preparing plans for their own property are exempted from licensing requirement by Business and Professional, Professions Code, blah, 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 blah. Then number four, plans for own property per Business and Profession Code, same code, any person may prepare conceptual or project design review plans for any landscape project on a property they own. Oh, that says landscape project. Okay, so it is different. Okay, I missed the word landscape. Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, and then I wanted to look at page 723, Exhibit F, 6.3, Projects Specific Administrative Approval Standards. And then number P is retaining walls. You know, I think, for safety's sake, I think there should be a maximum height of retaining walls for administrative review. There, you know, there can be some pretty lofty retaining walls that require structural engineers, and they require good drainage, and, you know, your three-and-a-half-foot or high one, I think, is fine under administrative, but I think there should be, if they got higher, there should be something.
Commissioner Wiskom, regarding retaining walls, the proposed code does include zoning height maximums for retaining walls.
Okay.
And staff can only administratively approve the max zoning height for the specified item.
Okay.
So in this case, within 10 feet of the front lot line, we could approve max three feet. All other areas, it's max six feet. On the right-hand side, you see maximum height with a minor zoning exception. Those would all require a public hearing and mail notice because that's an MZE request.
Okay, so maybe you need a little asterisk note next to retaining walls in that administrative approval, so people know that it's not any retaining wall. Okay, I'm getting there. Okay, and then on page 746, Exhibit J of, oh, no, forget about that. That was, that was something I sent to you, Mr. Hamilton-Rolls, about, it says southern oak woodland, but I think that was maybe an error. Vegetation removal talks about southern oak woodland? Yeah, is that an error? Yeah?
That is correct, yeah.
It is correct. What is southern oak air, southern oak woodland?
Oak woodland is protected.
I know oaks are protected, yeah, but southern, southern oaks? I mean, our oak is Quercus agrofolia, was the most live oak. So I just wondered where the word southern came from, that's all.
Commissioner Wiskom, that is a very good question. All of our biological resources documents refer to it as southern oak woodland, so, but you're correct that it's.
It might just be southern California oak woodland. Yeah, okay, that works for me. I don't care. Okay, and then page 747, Exhibit J, this probably is for Ms. Ostringer. The public health, safety, and welfare are appropriately protected and preserved. Should we get rid of the word welfare? Because you've made me do that before.
For single-family homes, we can use the word welfare. For single-family homes, we can use the word welfare. It's under the Housing Accountability Act that we don't use welfare.
Okay, so, but it's okay here.
And Commissioner Wiskom, I'd like to clarify that on that specific page, that is reflecting the current SFB findings for approval of a project. The proposed findings do not include, they're different, they don't include that verbiage.
Oh, really? Oh.
That's just a comparison of the current versus the proposed findings.
Oh, okay, okay, I missed that.
And if I may add, that was at the request of the Single Family Design Board. They really struggle. It's either, it's just kind of rote, like, and this project complies with this one, and it doesn't really have meaning, or they feel wildly out of their comfort zone if something comes before them, and they, they're an aesthetic board, that's what they want to focus on. And so that, they were very strong in their opinion of having that removed.
Ah, okay, that's really interesting. That's, I'm surprised that, that's, as a landscape architect, that was like the first thing.
Well, I think, again, from your Planning Commission perspective, you all would look at that finding in a very different way, given the context of what you look at, but when the purview is design review, and they're architects and public at large, they, you'll have another project that you'll see later on that addresses that. And I can just say, again, that was very strong opinions from the Single Family Design Board.
Okay, okay, fine, thank you for that. Okay, and then, Mr. Hamilton-Roll, can you go to, I think it's slide 17? Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, what, final approval appealable only by project applicant? Really?
That is correct. That is what we're proposing.
Wow, I, what does someone do if, I mean, you've truncated the process, which I think is great to streamline it, but what if, you know, Mr. Booth was sitting here, they went through, you know, what do you do if, if, if a neighbor thinks something is not, not right? You know, the FAR calculation is wrong, or, you know, what? I, I find this, what's the rationale for this?
So if I may, Commissioner Wiskom and Commissioners, that this was, there's multiple things happening. So we wanted to reduce the number of hearings or projects that had to go through such an excessive number of hearings, but by taking away the final approval, there is going to mean that there's going to be more detail required at project design approval. So the projects that the board will see at project design approval will be fleshed out a little bit more with more detail. And then, secondly, we created the substantial conformance determination criteria, that seven criteria that outlines if you change, if it doesn't meet any one of these seven, that's an automatic revised project design approval. So that's not even a substantial conform, it's like, if it, that's the objective criteria to tell us that you are out of substantial conformance, and therefore you either need to redesign to go back to what was approved, or we're going to send you back to a public hearing for a revised project design approval, which opens up the appeal process all over again. So that's where that one would come into play.
So project, okay, so project design approval is appealable by anyone?
Anyone.
And it's the final approval, which you, you've truncated that in a lot of cases, right?
We've truncated it so that it would be at the, it would be through the building permit application, that staff says, okay, we don't, we can't, we're uncomfortable granting final approval, so we're going to refer this back to the Single Family Design Board for the final approval, and that hearing is what can, that could only be appealed by the applicant.
Yeah, I only heard half the sentence, and Commissioner Barnwell did too, and we went, what?
I'm sorry to scare you.
Commissioner Wiskom, just to add on to that, one of the main reasons that we are doing that is actually to help benefit the applicants and their understanding of the process, because it is very confusing to people. They think the final approval is the one that matters, and really, it's not. It's project design approval that matters, and then they get frustrated that they raise issues about size, bulk, and scale, and they can't be addressed at that final.
That makes, that makes perfect sense. Okay, that's, that's great. Thank you. Okay, and, okay. FAR, so we've, you guys added some pretty serious language about how to calculate FAR, did you not? Or has that always been in there? No?
The FAR has always been in there.
I know it's been in there, but did you, did you?
It's relocated, so that's why it looks like there's changes, but it's really, it's there, no change, it's just relocated.
Okay, so we rely on applicants for FAR calc accuracy, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and does staff ever check if they're asked to check?
Staff, yeah, staff does check, double-check the FAR calculation.
You do, okay, because there was a case where there was a big discrepancy in an appeal about how FAR was calculated. So, so it's a, it's a normal process now for you to check FAR?
Correct.
And has been, correct.
Okay, okay, fine. And Ms. Billstein talked about adding an annual review internally to ensure the new guidelines in Title 30 are working well. Have you considered doing that? I think that's a good idea.
Absolutely. I mean, I love feedback, and I think that having some practice and kind of seeing, how does this work for staff? How does it work for applicants? How does it work for the board?
Right.
How does it work, you know, kind of what is the neighbor experience with, with kind of what they can expect? I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, okay, so I think that would be important, and that's where you get your 21% number.
You get our real number.
So, and then, are we still calling these guidelines? Is that, I know Commissioner Baughy asked that question, so we call them guidelines still?
The proposed Single Family Design Board guidelines will remain, yeah, they're sort of guidelines.
Guidelines, okay. Okay, I think that's all my questions. I just want to say, this has been, the staff report was amazing, the whole process has been amazing. It was a lot of material, but you guys just did an outstanding job, unbelievable job on it. So just thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiskom, as always. Commissioner Boss.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All but one of my questions have already been asked and answered, so thank you to my fellow Commissioners. My only remaining question is if we'll communicate these changes or updates to applicants who maybe have stopped in the process in the past because there were issues with, like, open yard or the appeals process, but under the updated guidelines, maybe it would be a smoother process for them. So I'm wondering if we'll have communication with applicants that didn't get all the way through the process in the past.
Thank you, Vice Chair Boss. When this ordinance, or a version of this ordinance is adopted, there will be a lot of communication to the public about, you know, A, that it's adopted, and B, what the new code standards are and what the guidelines say. So we anticipate doing a good amount of training for staff, for members of the public, you know, publishing land development team bulletins, and members of the public can always sign up to receive those updates online. So if they are interested, that information is out there.
And if I may add to Vice Chair Boss, that we also will be able to, again, once we have staff trained, we can start implementing this immediately, because we have a lot of the zone, Title 30 zoning ordinance updates are things that have come out of frustration through the building permit review, the garage conversions, well, I don't, fighting people, well, I don't want to put in a stove here, but in order to grant these things, you need to have certain things. So there's going to be immediate implementation that'll just make just general process easier and streamline things. So it may not just be people who are kind of waiting in the wings, but just also people who are kind of starting the process and who make assumptions but might not know everything. So we want people to understand their options and get what they really want, generally speaking.
Great, I really appreciate that. Thank you. Commissioner Barnwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One last comment. Are you going to take this to an AIA chapter meeting and a Contractors Association meeting? Would that be something on your get it out there proposals? I think that would.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnwell. And just while we're on that topic, I'd like to thank the AIA Santa Barbara chapter for their support and their input on this project. I don't think they're in the room anymore, but they've been an instrumental part of this project, and we would love to.
Well, I didn't mean just thanking them, but I meant, once it's implemented, you take it to them and say, okay, here's the new rules, and here's what we've done, and here's our contact person, that kind of thing.
Yes, absolutely, that is something, that is something we'd like to do.
Thank you.
And the Contractors Association, we have worked with them as well throughout this process, so they were also very excited about it. But, yeah, I think that's part of the education.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnwell. Okay, well, many of my questions have been answered, so thank you to my fellow Commissioners for all of their work on this. I'm just going to go in order and hopefully hit on things either that weren't directly asked or that I continue to have questions on, kind of in order just of the staff report. So first, for one D on the streamlining the process for minor zoning exceptions by converting commonly approved MZs into zoning standards. So there was a lot of discussion in the staff report regarding fences and the fact that many of these hearings are rubber stamped, and I just wanted to understand, it seems that the fence aspect was taken out as one of the ones that would be kind of approved through this new process. Could you just elaborate on why that is, and how many hearings are we seeing on fences specifically? I don't know if you know that answer, but just a rough ballpark, because maybe we want to keep that in, just wanted to understand a little bit more.
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. So like I mentioned, we did originally plan to take fences and hedges out of the public hearing realm, but we do get a lot of questions, interest, day-to-day, just from members of the community about fences and hedges in their neighborhoods, and we recognize that they do have potential for impact on the streetscape and also between neighbors. So we thought that it would be a good idea to maintain a notice requirement so that people in the neighborhood and especially adjacent neighbors could understand when a proposal to build a tall fence or to permit a tall hedge is going in place.
And if I may add to that, Chair Wardlow, that, you know, we, of all the zoning changes and things, we heard a lot from our zoning team that they do not want to touch fences and hedges, that they want to keep those at the public hearing, because, and maybe this is the Massachusetts, the 10 years of Massachusetts, good fences make good neighbors, and they're always, we have a lot of enforcement, a lot of oversight, a lot of complaints come in directly about fences in both interior and front. And the only, in order for people to even be aware that there's going to be a fence, you need to have a mailed notice so that, you know, it goes to the property owner. So it just, it kind of makes sense politically and just to, you know, ensure that, that we've. we've, that there is oversight. And I am similar to Commissioner Barnwell, just very, like, there's a real interest in not kind of building big walls up along our streetscapes, and I have a real sensitivity to that. So I think that from a design standpoint, that you're, if you're just an individual homeowner, you might just care about, well, I want this privacy, I want to use my yard in this way, but they're not necessarily thinking about the streetscape and kind of what that means. And so I think having that oversight is really critical. So it's kind of looking at it from different perspectives.
Okay, I really appreciate that, that makes sense, and so, thank you.
And Chair Wardlow, if I can add a little bit to that, I really do want to highlight that we are allowing by right now a five-foot fence, where before it was only three and a half feet. So that's, you know, we're trying to edit the zoning code a little bit so that we can be a little bit more flexible and get those projects through. And to answer a part of your question that you asked before, I think about 37 out of the 440 projects that we reviewed were for MZEs only, and by and large, they get approved. There does tend to be a little bit of neighbor interest, but they tend to be one-and-done hearings at consent when they're, when they're proposed.
Okay, thank you, that was really helpful in addressing my question completely, so thank you so much. Next question, really slightly, I think a couple of people touched on this, specifically Bauke. So we've received some comments, public comment on the new definition of substantial conformance, which I'm very excited to have, so I appreciate the work that you all have done on that. I think that's a really important aspect of this, as we all saw in previous hearings. But did we really compare with other cities? Because just in looking at the brief examples that were provided in public comment, they are a lot shorter. So just wanted to see, do we have other cities that we are kind of more akin to, that have more robust criteria like we have proposed here, or are we kind of new to setting the robust criteria?
Chair Wardlow, the criteria that we have, that we're proposing, are based on largely the county of Santa Barbara's substantial conformance criteria. This is a shortened version, but we also did want it to be, you know, usable and kind of tailored to what we think the design boards and the public would be interested in, in enforcing as substantial conformance criteria. We could certainly look at other jurisdictions outside of this area to get more ideas, though, if that's a suggestion.
No, I think that's a perfect answer, so I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure we weren't just like going out alone and being the first to have such a robust one, so, thank you.
And I, Chair Wardlow, that Mr. Booth had shared the substantial conformance determination from a number of other cities. I know that there were a couple of examples that he shared for today's comments to the planning commission, but there were others that he had shared, and he had shared the county, and Santa Barbara County in particular. And just, we want to make this, as Mr. Hamilton Roll said, usable, so having, there are a lot of other standards that aren't, or objective, so it's really kind of, you know, it's, that's harder to make those calls, or, again, when it's staff, if zoning staff or any staff member should be able to look at it and not be a design review expert and be able to say, this complies or not, we want to kind of make it just fail-proof at that stage.
No, I appreciate that. I think you guys have done a really good job of balancing the need to, you know, address individual issues in a project, but also trying to create objective design, you know, standards that can be reviewed by a number of people. So, okay, thank you. Next, this may be a silly question, because maybe it's really obvious, but for 3B, when we're talking about the options for creative use of homes by allowing conversion of existing garages, which is awesome, very excited about, it says there's a limit to 500 max square feet for this, what if the garage is bigger? Is, do we just not allow bigger garages, or why would we not allow, like, why would the only conversions be limited up to 500 feet?
Chair Wardlow, I think.
It's on page 13 of the staff report saying a maximum of 500.
Just want to make sure I'm answering this correctly.
It's generally, Chair Wardlow, that's generally the size of a two-car garage. If, I mean, my personal garage on the west side is, was 550 square feet, so I understand the concern, and I'm just trying to think, you know, it's, we wanted to kind of, again, what's typical? Do you want to say anything else?
Just given that it says a maximum of 500, maybe we can adjust that to have more flexibility, because I don't know why we would limit ourselves, maybe we say a maximum of, or I don't know why we have a maximum.
Chair Wardlow, my understanding of what we're proposing is that the 500-square-foot maximum applies to guest houses, which are a specific type of accessory building. Garage conversions can be as large as the garage is currently. So if you have a 600-square-foot garage, you can convert that amount of square footage.
Okay, that makes sense. Then, to the question of the guest houses, same thing, same concept, why would we limit it to 500? I just want to create the most flexibility of this, I love this, I'm so excited to see that you have added this as a component of this, but I don't want to limit it if we don't have a reason.
Yeah, the garage conversion is not.
Not limited, great.
It's, it's the guest house, as Mr. Hamilton Roll said, and it's actually 650 square feet.
So we're wrong, I was wrong.
So I have in my notes, it says this allows owners to add a guest house, a maximum of 500-square-foot building used for guests, without the need to create a separate dwelling in it.
We may have altered that number with the same idea that you were having since we were written that staff report, because now in the code it says 650.
Okay.
So forgive our ear, that's our ear, and we had that internal conversation and changed it.
Wonderful, all right, well, so now it's 650.
Yes.
So again, what if it's bigger?
For a guest house?
Yeah.
Then they wouldn't qualify under the ordinance as written.
But if, earlier, I think we were talking about something where we were talking that the maximum for like an ADU with no design review is 800, so why wouldn't we align with the 800?
I think that's good feedback.
Okay, so maybe, I'll just include that in my comments.
Chair Wardlow, just one additional comment on that, there is still some benefit to people pursuing the ADU, because it does add to our housing stock, whereas a guest house does not. And so that is just something to keep in mind in terms of, do we want to incentivize it as much as ADUs are incentivized?
That's a fair, that's a fair question, but from a cost perspective for, you know, an individual homeowner that already has, you know, that's so significant to go through the ADU process, and we get that feedback a lot.
Through the chair, the cost is not necessarily more to go through the process to get a guest room, the difference is really only in the cost of installing the kitchen. So I don't know that there's a huge cost difference, whether you call it an ADU or it's a guest house. You still need a building permit for it.
Okay, I see what you're saying, wait. Okay, I may come back to this later.
And Chair Wardlow, if I may, I just want to point the planning commission to the code section that does reference 650 square feet is on page 152 of the amendments. So it's 30 dot 140 dot 115 C, or wait, C2.
Okay.
So that just said, yeah, so our staff report is slightly off, but what's in the code is, is what we're proposing.
Got it. I think Commissioner Peterson has a question, so I'll let him.
Just on this topic, are there different occupancy requirements in our city between ADUs and guest homes? Like, could a guest home be a short-term rental?
That's not the same as the.
Or is it more easily allowed to be one?
So the planning commission on December 18th will be reviewing a staff report on short-term rentals and home shares. And so you'll be seeing a definition for, what's the difference between a short-term rental versus a home share? And there are different policy conversa, there's different proposals that you all will have a chance to look at. So I would generally say that, that a guest home is not supposed to be used as a short-term rental, but let's just put a pin in that, and you'll discuss that on December 18th.
Okay, zooming out, just to go from this, there are, are there more restrictions on what you can do with an ADU than with a guest home, or do we have more city prerogative over what you can do with a guest home?
So Commissioner Peterson, so the ADUs, it's just, there's different requirements for what you need to have installed. So the accessory dwelling unit requires that kitchen, there's different building code, but it allows smaller setbacks versus what a standard setback would be for a residential zone if it's an accessory structure like a guest house. So there's just different, people use the code that they want, and that makes sense that gets them what they want as far as they can. And what we're doing with this whole, the garage conversion or the allowance to create guest houses is just to kind of give people the full, you know, the range of options that try to work with what homeowners want. And so for your occupancy, you know, let's take out the short-term rental and like that commercial side of things, but generally, this could be used for, I mean, I think it just, the building code, if it's residential occupant, I don't know enough about the building code to know all the ins and outs, but we're kind of looking at it with, are you creating habitable space or non-habitable space? And there are certain building code requirements if you're creating habitable space, and habitable space could be a guest house or a guest room or an at-home office, which might be different than storage. I want to, I don't care about my garage, I want to convert it, but I'm just converting it to storage, which is non-habitable space, and so there might be difference in the building code there.
Okay, and I really, I don't want to belabor to this point, but did you have any other questions, sorry?
No, thanks, I'm just trying to get this understanding of, yeah.
I think we're on the same.
Why would we do 650 if it's similar to an ADU, so, yeah, thanks.
If I may, I do think that, you know, Mr. Bus pointed out that accessory dwelling units count towards our housing inventory, just like the numbers, so they count. So if we provide all the same incentives as an ADU, then people might not add the kitchen to get to that unit that helps us out with our RENA numbers. So that's, you know, we're conscious of that, so we don't have to give everything away, but we're just still trying to be expansive, provide more options, but may not give it everything.
So the biggest difference is that the ADU obviously requires a kitchen and the other one doesn't?
Correct.
Okay, got it. So we don't want to encourage, if we're allowing the same size as the ADU, then we don't want to encourage that, and then we're creating housing that doesn't have a kitchen, which isn't really great housing, but, okay, I see your point. Okay, that was very helpful. Thank you for working through that.
If I may, I want to just kind of add to that, the point of the ADU ordinance in requiring kitchens is to not have substandard housing, is to provide for heating and cooling and bathing and cooking facilities. And prior to ADUs being permitted by law, we saw a lot of that, especially, including our community. So we do want to explicitly have that kind of level of quality of housing and housing stock that allows smaller units, but also full cooking facilities and not having students and the like not have those facilities. So it's just a different type of rental that can also be rented separately, et cetera, to someone not associated. So I do want to be clear, that's not just us wanting credit, we do want to be clear that there is really a need for that type of housing.
That makes a lot of sense, I really appreciate you guys walking through this with us, I'm, I get it now.
And through the chair, I think it's been mentioned before, but we know that people build ADUs when they don't necessarily want an ADU, it's just their only path to get something. And that is substantiated by a survey that SB CAG did, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, Jessica or Ms. Grant is looking that up in case you want to see those numbers, but it was a little bit staggering what percentage of them are not actually being used as residential units in the county, so.
And this is another path, so people can actually maybe get what they want legitimately.
Without having to go through that, and then we're not counting what we think is housing stock when it's not housing stock.
Exactly.
Okay, got it.
And to add to that, what we currently see, we have so many demands for, someone just wants a full bathroom, they have an accessory structure on site, some kind of accessory building, it might be different from their garage, but we only allow, the code only allows a three-by-seven-foot half bathroom. So you can't, if you start to put anything, kitchen, or, you know, you start to move into a different lens of code review, and so we, it's been so restrictive, and someone might say, well, I just want to have my pottery studio, or I just want to have my home office and, you know, my workout room with a shower in there, what's the big deal? But we won't allow it. So there's kind of different considerations, and it's just, again, as Mr. Bus was saying, people just go the ADU route and build the kitchen, do the whole thing, they might not use it for housing, but it's just because they're trying to get a full bath.
Okay, this is great, well, I think that you guys are spot on, I think that 650 is more reasonable than 5, but I like that we're still, you know, prioritizing the ADUs in the way that we are, but while allowing for that flexibility of like, hey, I want to have a pottery studio and a bigger bathroom. Okay. Okay, I think this is my last question, okay. Can you give a little bit more background on our open yard, our decision to reduce open yard? But first, can we start with like, when did we start our open yard requirements? What, like, when did that go into effect originally? And is this the first reduction in open yard that we are doing?
I don't know when the open yard, I mean, it's been in place in our ordinance for a very long time, at least since the 50s and probably before, so we've had open yard for a long time. And it has been altered multiple times, we altered it in 2017 when we did the Enzo update for Title 30.
So we reduced it in 2017?
We changed it, we added the, that provision with the 800 square feet for the lots less than 5,000, which now we're changing now to be lots less than 6,000, so that was added in 2017.
Okay, so we've reduced it once before?
At least once.
Okay, at least once before.
Maybe more, but at least once in my memory, yeah.
And so what is our rationale, or I'm sure you guys are getting feedback, and that's why we're considering this, but I think of the wonderful Sheila Lodge, and I remember her talking to me like on one of my first times in planning commission about how much work the city did to ensure that we really protect green spaces and trees, and that's why when you're standing in the mountains and you look down on the city, it's so beautiful. I'm concerned about moving away from that, and I just really want to understand, like, why would we be considering reducing this? Like, what is the big benefit? Is it that, you know, folks are just flipping out that this is becoming, making projects so unattainable, or, like, I would rather us keep the open yard requirements that we have today than reducing them? I'd rather create maybe more flexibility, but to put this, to reduce it, I don't know. I'm concerned about that.
Could I ask, are you referring to the single-unit and two-unit open yard reduction or the multi-unit?
All, all of it.
Okay.
I know that there's more flexibility now in the way that you're approaching the multi-unit. I think I'm, I would need to look through, like, there's a lot of notes here, but I just don't, I'm concerned about the whole thing. I think with the multi-unit, if I'm recalling correctly, I'm okay with like the differences of the types of open yard, yeah, flexibility, that's okay, but I'm concerned about the move to just reduce open yard broadly, in the various ways that it's proposed here.
Chair Wardlow, I'm going to talk a little bit about one and two-unit development, and then I'm going to pass it over to you maybe for multi-unit development.
Actually, let me start, because mine is shorter. The, the multi-unit, the multi, we don't feel the multi-unit open yard is being reduced. The 15% is the same as it is now, it's just the, the individual dimensions and the flexibility provided for the private open yard, like the balconies and the decks.
So the same amount, you're just moving them around?
Right, yes.
But the balconies is, is different than open yard, but?
It's part of the open, the overall 15% still needs to be provided, and that's the current standard now.
Okay, and so that's still happening, you're just giving more flexibility in how?
In how it's provided, in multiple locations of different size, different shapes and sizes.
And so that's why your question, your part was easier, so when we get to the single-family residents, we're talking about specifically reducing.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And so it is a reduction, but the majority of our lots in this, single-family lots are 50 by 100, so most of them are around 5,000, and that's where the open yard threshold for the 800 square feet, that's, if it's for lots 5,000 and under. So anything, if you're 5,001 square feet, then that means you are obligated to have 1,250 square feet of open yard with a 20 by 20 open yard, minimum dimension of 20 by 20. So what we see, and what the, kind of our, we can look back at a lot of open yard modification requests that happen at the staff hearing officer for people with lots under 6,000 square feet that are non-conforming development, so they don't meet the open yard, the 1,250 open yard requirement, or they're, maybe they can't get that 20 by 20 minimum area. And what happens is, there's a lot of, first of all, they usually, if they trigger design review, they go to design review, have to get concept review, then they go to the staff hearing officer, there's the staff report, there's the whole process, there's an appeal point, and then they go back to design review. And generally, if they're a constrained lot, and 6,000 square feet is still pretty small, and if, let's say, you're a corner lot, there's just other site constraints that a lot of, these are just, generally, the open yard mods are always approved. So we kind of think. So we kinda think in our minds that if there's something that just always seems to be approved, no matter what, then let's change the standard to avoid the extra process. And for a modification, it's at least, what is it, $5,000 approximately for one modification? So it's a lot on a single-family homeowner when they are trying to, maybe they have a two-bedroom, one-bathroom home, and they wanna do a small addition, and they have open yard issues, and so it just becomes really expensive, time-consuming, and not worth a heartache. So that's why we're, for single and two-unit development, we are proposing just, again, to cap it at the 6,000 square feet, and under is requiring 800.
And is, so you talked about non-conforming existing buildings, and I think that makes a lot of sense, because these, you know, the buildings are how they are, and then now we're coming in with rules saying, hey, conform to this, so I understand that. When we're, if we're talking about new development, where they're starting over, you know, it's brand-new, can we keep it for that? Because to me, 6,000, a 6,000-foot lot isn't small. It's, you know, I look at places all the time in our city, and they're 4,000 or whatever. So like, to me, I don't wanna, I'm just concerned about moving away from our open yard aspect if it's a new development, but I hear you on the non-conforming.
Chair Wardlow, to add to that, lots less than 6,000 square feet are substandard lots. The minimum lot size in a single-family zone is 6,000, so these are all gonna be small lots, per our zoning standards. That was part of the rationale why we moved it from 5,000 to 6,000. So it's really only reduced for those lots between 5 and 6,000 square feet.
Okay. I don't wanna continue to belabor this. You guys have made a really good point, and I agree with you, I don't want applicants to have to pay tons of money to go through these simple things that are getting granted modifications anyways, I just don't wanna start going down a path that we're moving away from the open yard.
Chair, can I jump in?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I have a, that was, I was alluding to before, the modifications that come before the hearing officer, a lot of them are the rear yard modifications. So I have another question. So with all accessory, with ADUs coming in now and accessory buildings, is that another reason why you're reducing the size of the square foot of the open space?
Yes, Commissioner DeLucio, the ADU regulations are certainly a part of the reasoning for reducing required open yard to 800 square feet. That's currently, I believe, what the minimum is if you are proposing a detached ADU. So this further aligns single-family regulations with ADU regulations.
This was really helpful. I really appreciate your time in answering all of these questions, and thank you, as I echo my fellow commissioners, for all the work that staff has done on this. This is a huge undertaking, so thank you so much for all of your work. I think that wraps up my questions for now. Again, I appreciate my fellow commissioners' kind of high-level questions, and then the in-the-weeds questions. So I think if anybody has no more questions, then we can move on to deliberations. Who would like to go first? Commissioner DeLucio.
First today, okay, so.
Crushing it.
I think overall, you did, again, you've done an amazing job on this, and I think it's almost there, and I think I agree with all the input today, suggestions to incorporate those. And I think the training is gonna, training, once it's put together, adopted, I think it's in the training, which will make it successful. And then we'll have the annual review after one year to see, see how it's going and what kind of results we're seeing. I never did understand why we had so many, so many stages of review, the, you know, I never understood the PDA part of it. I understood the part before that, and I understand it comes before the review board a number of times anyway, a couple of times probably, but I never understood what the PDA, why it had to go back for a PDA. So I like the way it's being collapsed, where it should be with the building process, when you pull the building permit. And again, you can always send it back to the design board if you find that, you know, it's not conforming to what they approved, or the applicant doesn't feel that, they feel it does, it does conform, and then you can throw it back to the design board, so I like that. But I like, and I know it's all about streamlining too, the state has caused some of this too, where we need to move along, unfortunately, a little quicker with the, with streamlining, 'cause is it only five, is it only five times they can go, they can go through the process, the public hearings, for the single-family review board also?
For, Commissioner DeLucio, that's for new single-family residences and for other housing development projects at ABR and HLC.
Another thing, the neighborhood compatibility findings, I think you did a great job with that, also segregating it, what really belongs before the design board, what they really need to make those findings and more streamlined approach of making those findings and helping them with that. And maybe as we go forward, and this is adopted, and we, and it's being executed, it's in the training, and maybe staff can help a little more in getting them to, where they feel comfortable or can make the findings, and maybe it's, maybe it is one-page document or something, this type of, I don't mean a full-blown staff report, maybe, maybe they do need some guidance with some kind of page or two in front of them to help them. And then finally, I'm not gonna go there with hedges, I'm from another city, and anytime you try to regulate hedges, you know what happens. I do like the way you do out, you do, I do find it interesting that the pages showed, it showed the fences and the retaining wall and the hedges, I found it kind of interesting how you started eight feet on the hedges already for the administrative, and then it goes all the way up to 12 and 14 feet. So I thought that was kind of interesting, how it didn't start a little less than eight feet, but again, I'm not gonna go there, I think I understand why you're settling for the higher height, for, it's more privacy issue? Is that why the folks, people want hedges for privacy?
Commissioner DeLucio, that is one consideration, but mainly, we were just not proposing to change what currently exists.
Right, and I totally agree with you, I get it, it gets very, very political, so. So those are, those are my, just my end comments at this time, but thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Commissioner DeLucio. Commissioner Wiscombe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just can't compliment you enough, it's a major, major piece of work, I can't imagine putting this together, but, so thank you for that. I just, I do wanna refer to the AIA letter, I know you've worked hard with them, and they say here, "We recommend eliminating ambiguous language in Section 4 of the proposed guidelines, such as in some cases may be requested or may need to show." I would like to see you maybe go over that and see if that could possibly be a little bit more, probably a little bit firmer in the language and not so subjective. If you can do that, that would be great. And I'd like to see some sort of annual review process to see how it's going, not necessarily in front of Planning Commission, but just internally, so you can make changes if you need to. I'd like to see a note on your admin approval chart for the retaining walls that refers to the code section where, where the height is different, right? Is that clear? Is that, yeah, making sense?
Commissioner Wiscombe, that is clear, and I just wanna clarify, the proposed admin guidelines or the administrative approval criteria, rather, do specify a max height of five feet that can be administratively approved.
Oh, it does, okay.
It does.
Okay, so that's there, okay. I didn't see a note on the chart you showed here today, that, I missed that, I guess.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I think that's pretty much all I have. So I wanna thank you very much for, there were a couple other things, I think, that we talked about, oh, I know, that we talked about.
Commissioner Wiscombe, the public view.
Pardon?
Defining the public view, the scenic public view, so you've got, I've got my notes here.
Yeah, definitely that, I think that's really important. And, yeah, add that, and then, oh, and then add the, I think you already have it, the story.
Story polls to add that to the guideline, so that it's very, we're explicit in what the expectation is for keeping them up.
Good, okay. And I think, I think that's, that's all I have, I just wanted to thank you very much for, for everything. It's, I think, gonna be a wonderful document, and it's, I think it's really gonna help. And it's gonna help people that are doing projects without permits, you know, that this is, you know, gonna make, once it gets out there, it's gonna be an easier process, and you won't have the under-the-radar, as many of the under-the-radar, not that we have many of those in this city. Okay, so thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiscombe. Vice Chair Boss.
Thank you, Chair. I wanna thank staff as well, I think this was, I know it was a lot of work and a long time coming, and just appreciate the thorough public outreach and really considering the comments and feedback from everybody you talked to. I especially wanna thank you for Exhibit C, as I was trying to go back before, between A and B, and then I discovered C, so that was very helpful, thank you. I kept my sanity a little bit. But just also wanna call out the solution for providing options for creative use of home space and conversion, I think that's gonna be really welcome, especially as household dynamics change and there's more shared housing, I think this will be really helpful to a lot of households, so just thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you, Vice Chair Boss. Commissioner Bauke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for shortness of time, I concur with my fellow commissioners' comments, great job, continuing effort here, and I think our commissioners provided you some very good input, I think the only thing I have on my list is that conversation about substantial conformity as to the square footage, I think that's just, I mean, we're talking something, you know, 15 by 10 could be in that change, that's, you know, Allison mentioned some situations where things might come up, but none of those would have fallen into that kind of category, it'd be like maybe 20 square feet or something, not 150, so I really would want you to look at what you think would be a reasonable thing, because changing plans afterwards, I mean, if you want to change your plans after it's been approved, that's on you, and you should go back and, you know, it shouldn't be, oh, you got a free pass 'cause I decided to add another, another bedroom to my project, I just don't, don't get that, so, thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Bauke. Commissioner Barnwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You didn't use the phrase granny unit, but that's what you're talking about with that 650-square-foot thing. And I remember a discussion about granny units, and we, we were so onerous in our requirements, that over the course of something like 22 years, we had, we had permitted nine of them. And yet, everybody wanted the art studio, or whatever that thing is. And this, I agree with the 650-square-foot, square-footage number, that's a, that's not a two-bedroom place, that's like a one-bedroom or a studio, so it's, its use is restricted by its design. So I think you did well on that, and I have many people who are gonna come to you to do just that, 'cause they wanna room with a bath, they don't wanna rent it out, they just wanna a room with a bath for their teenage daughter or whatever. Thank you very much, and a great, superb job.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnwell, and yes, I will echo the feedback from my fellow commissioners, this was a huge effort, and I really appreciate the staff report, I thought, oh, sorry, shoot, I apologize. Commissioner Peterson, you can go first.
Thank you, I can go last if you want.
No, I'm sorry.
So, thank you to staff for all that you've done, I think this has been a years-long process, and you all should be commended, I echo what's been said. Small point that Commissioner Wiscombe supports me raising here is, a southern oak woodland is a woodland ecosystem that includes multiple species, or characterized by a mixed canopy of trees, such as coastal live oak and other types of oak, so we're incorporating our oak here into that.
Victor County down the block.
Possibly, but I'll leave it at the species. So, that covers oak, that's good. My only comment would be, I would personally support, I know there are reasons, and this has been a long process, as to what was excluded from discretionary review, I personally would support trying to look for anything else that can be put into ministerial approval, exempted from the discretionary review, to free up staff time and to get things quicker, more quickly turned around for applicants. I don't know if it's possible, but I would support it. Thank you.
I apologize to you, Commissioner Peterson, thank you for your closing deliberation marks. And yes, I will jump off of what Commissioner Peterson just said, I think this is a really great effort in terms of working towards streamlining and doing more ministerial review. I know this commission has seen a number of projects where we've asked that question of, could this have been, you know, done in a different way, where we're not requiring a hearing? I think this is a really, really great work product that addresses a lot of those for the single-family design board. I, again, just commend staff for all of this, I had made like extensive notes, thinking like, okay, we're gonna have edits in these different sections, and really, I think you've done a phenomenal job of answering everyone's questions and being really thorough. I think, you know, I wrote out each of the bullets, 'cause I thought we were gonna be, maybe have issues with different bullets, and I think unanimously, I think we're all in support of every aspect of the proposal that's been put forward with the multiple bullets per, through the three goals. I will echo Commissioner Wiscombe on the definition of public views, and I think that's something that's important that we add into this, but this is a really, this is a vast improvement, and I'm excited to see that. To Commissioner Peterson's point, of course, in your immense spare time, if there are others, but maybe that's something that, you know, when we do this review of what's working, what's not, based on this, how this goes, we could, staff may have other ideas of potentially other things that could be included in something like this, but this is a really great first step, and I'm really excited. So thank you all for your strong work on this. There is no motion required on this, is there anything else that you all need from us?
Chair Wardlow, just one thing I wanted to say, adding to all the things, I wanna thank the Planning Commission for your comments the last time this was here, it kind of sent us into a bit of a spiral, trying to figure out, you know, how do we define, you know, minor versus major alterations? But I think where we ended up is a much better, cleaner ordinance and a better way forward, so appreciate all those comments originally.
Wonderful. Well, with that, if there's no other further direction needed or questions from the team, we will close this item out and move on to the administrative portion of our agenda. Does, yeah, does anyone need any, I feel like we're, I feel like there's something else that you may need.
I think, well, given commissioners, well, Chair Wardlow and commissioners, I'm hearing that there aren't significant changes, but I do think, you know, our goal is to hopefully still come in early January. Mr. Hamilton will be likely out for, in, for portions of January and for exciting news, and I'll let him share that, and ultimately, we might still be able to get this in, it requires a 20-day notice for the ordinance changes, so that's really why we can't make a decision, or the Planning Commission can't make a decision today. So I'm still hoping in early January, and we can update the guidelines and the items that have been discussed here today.
Right, thank you so much for reminding me of that, so, and that's why we're not reading the recommended findings at this hearing, we'll do that in the next hearing, got it? Okay, perfect. Well, thank you all so much, really appreciate everyone's hard work on this, and I hope everybody has a great rest of their day. We will, as the Planning Commission, move on to the administrative portion of our agenda. Does anyone have any committee and liaison reports, starting with staff hearing officer?
There was no hearing officer meeting since the last time we met, so, next week perhaps.
Okay. Looks like Commissioner Barnwell has something?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I carried the torch to the council on our discussions relating to the Basile Nuevo remodel, and it was a very, very interesting meeting, I don't know if you guys watched it, but it was long, really long. I think there were 100 people that spoke. I just wanna, I wanna compliment this group. I, I had some trouble with those applicants and what they were saying, an example was, they said, well, you know, this is one of the longest reviews.
Chair Wardlow, Commissioner Barnwell, we can't really go into depth on that, if you can give like a succinct report out?
We can't go into depth on what the council said when I was covering that?
No. But you can give a succinct report of what happened at the hearing.
Okay, what happened was Brian Kornall brought a drawing that showed a dramatic comparison of size, bulk, and scale for what was proposed compared to the courthouse. The council... The council complimented the Planning Commission on having brought up the two primary issues of the housing at Lot 2, which was a big deal, and the underlying, the gift of the underlying fee. Our having dealt with that gave the council a lot of ground to stand on themselves, to be able to move forward with it. They had information on the numbers that we did not, and they came to a, what they referred to as a soft no. They required a lot further discussion and much more transparency, and much of their, much of their concern had to do with the housing. It was a very interesting meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And thank you, Commissioner Barnwell, for attending on behalf of the Planning Commission and making your remarks. So thank you. All right, anyone else have any committee or liaison reports? Okey-dokey. With that, it is now 3:45 PM. Record timing. And that concludes our December 4, 2025 Planning Commission hearing. Our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, December 11. Thank you all, and have a beautiful rest of your day.